The views and opinions in this program are not those of CISA seven or Spectrum.
Welcome everyone to the May ninth, um, twenty twenty-two work session. We'll start with roll call. Beth?
Smith? Hi, here, sorry. Becker?
Here.
Welch?
Here.
Layer Lee?
Here.
McCoy?
Here.
Leighton and Warren?
Here.
Mills?
Here.
Did we get Nancy?
Yeah.
Okay, we, um, we're, there's six here and Nancy is remote, Nancy Welch is remote. Um, and we're going to move on now to the open forum. Are there any, is there anyone who wants to speak? Okay, it looks like there isn't anyone tonight, so we're going to move on to, um, operations. Um, and that is going to be facilitated by Don Smith.
Okay, we are going to start out with our diffusion summary. This will come to the board to be voted on at our next regular board meeting on the twenty-third of May. And I believe we have Mike Clark from Baird here.
I am here.
Thank you, thank you for joining us tonight.
Does, does everyone have a copy of the, the diffusion summary?
Yeah, it's, it's posted in the board docs for everyone.
Okay, great, great, so, um, yeah, this is a, for those who are not familiar with the diffusions, it's a pre-funding of districts existing debt. A little different than pre-payment, since the payment won't take place for four years yet. But the, um, but the, the idea is the district was able to levy additional funds in the twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year. Uh, because of declining revenue limit authority and, and increased state aid. An amount sufficient to pay off the remainder of the Fund thirty-nine debt. Fund thirty-nine debt is a referendum approved debt. So included in the levy this last fall, the approved by the board, uh, was seventeen point eight to seven or seventeen point nine million dollars that will pre, well, pre-fund the payments, but legally the district will met its obligation, will have no, no longer have any outstanding Fund thirty-nine debt. Um, that'll have to pay going forward. Obviously, you know, that plays into some of the planning the district's doing as far as this fall. Um, but the, the money will be deposited to an escrow account. It, it'll pay off, um, the, um, two thousand seventeen bonds and the two nine, two thousand nineteen bonds. And as a result, uh, it'll save taxpayers approximately, we haven't finalized the escrow numbers yet. Um, because you can, uh, so we'll save about eight hundred ninety thousand dollars, we're currently estimating. That savings comes about by paying the debt off on the call date and also the district, the funds, once they are deposited in the escrow account, uh, they will earn interest. Now you're limited government securities. And one good thing about the increasing interest rate environment, you're actually going to earn a decent chunk of money in there, much more than we anticipated last fall when the levy was set. Um, but, um, so saving eight hundred ninety thousand dollars. The district, you know, through various deficiencies, various refinancing, has saved over two million dollars in terms of taxpayer dollars. And again, the eight, eight, eight hundred ninety we're estimating is purely taxpayer relief. Uh, it cannot be used for any other purpose that levy authority. So that's kind of the overview, we have the steps. Uh, we've done this multiple times within the district and so, um, the, uh, for those of you who've been around, you've been through this process before, uh, this will come to the board on the, the, um, May twenty-third. Uh, for board action, there'll be a resolution on the board, uh, agenda to, to take action on. Um, but the second page of the document gets into the details, you can see the seventeen and nineteen, uh, issues. Um, the kind of highlighted in a salmon color paint, depending on, on what your screen is showing you. Um, but those, those funds will, will, those payments will be funded and will become the responsibility of the escrow agent, who the district has used Associated Bank in the past. And again, generating taxpayer savings of over eight hundred ninety-three thousand dollars. Now, after this, the district will not have the, the option of doing a diffusion, because you will no longer have any existing debt. Unless the district is able to generate some additional levy authority, you know, the, the district will see a substantial drop in it's, uh, levy and resulting tax rate. So, with that, I'll conclude my comments and take any questions if there are any.
Okay, are there any questions?
This is a reminder, even with the additional levy in the Fund thirty-nine, the district's tax rate did decrease last, last fall, so.
Okay. Sorry, Andrew.
Um, I just wanted to see, we have, um, it's obviously good when we can do a, a diffusion, because it's a net positive financial thing to do. Uh, how does this fit into, you know, over the years, we've tried to keep consistent with bringing in, you know, I guess what you might say if on a, for the size of our district, as a kind of a medium-sized referendum as parts of the, uh, Fund thirty-nine drop-off. Um, here we'd be covering all of the Fund thirty-nine, does that still, I guess, does that fit in well to this strategy? Since in the, I don't remember us bringing down the Fund thirty-nine this much before with C P S, taking it all the way off the table.
Yeah, it, 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 going forward, um, as I stated, the only way the district would be able to continue the practice is if, if some, a new debt would be put in place and that only could be done through referendum. Um, you know, I know the district's having conversations, uh, in regards to the fall of twenty-two. Um, and if, if that's successful, if that's ultimately what the board decides to do, it would have that option again. There was a combination of things this year that kind of, um, let me back up even a little further than this year. Um, in, in scheduling out these deficiencies at one point, obviously, we anticipated the district going to referendum sooner than, than it, then it ultimately may end up being and a lot of factors in there. You know, COVID being one of them, so obviously, you know, what, the twenty-twenty referendum probably, you know, may have been slotted, but obviously, as many other districts did, um, you know, that really wasn't part of the planning at that time, too many issues going on. So as a result of that, you know, the district did deficiencies those years, paid down the debt. There's a bigger one this year and the primary driver for that is the state budget. The, the money that flowed into the state budget for schools was focused on property tax relief. And it wasn't spendable dollars, so it lowered the district's taxes and tax rate substantially. And so the district was faced with a situation and we looked at different scenarios in terms of, do we break this into two pieces? But given some of the longer-term planning, uh, things, the district, uh, thought, you know, how things might play out in the future. It was decided that, um, that levying the amount sufficient to pay off the debt, uh, um, was the best approach for the district, given kind of the, some of the future planning things is looking at, so. Um, you know, hopefully the district, you know, if it does choose to go to referendum this fall is successful. I think this sets you up really well to be successful, to be debt-free and to save all the money the district did. Um, and paying the debt down early through deficiencies or refinancings that we've done over the last several years. Um, you know, it, it, it puts the district in a good position, um, to go to the voters, um, and kind of build back a little bit of debt while it's looking at maybe some longer-term, bigger, you know, longer-term planning issues. So, but again, bottom line, this would be the last diffusion the district does unless it issues some new debt.
Okay, any other questions? Nancy, are you good? Okay, well, Mike, thank you so much for joining us, this will be, um, on our agenda at our next board meeting to vote on.
Okay, have a good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You too, thanks. Okay, next on the agenda is a facilities summary or survey report that's also attached in board docs. And we have Joe Donovan, who will be, um, reviewing this with us. Hello, Joe.
Hi, hi, everyone, thanks for the opportunity to be with you, uh, this evening and appreciate the opportunity to work with you once again, and I'll just, I need to apologize in advance. Um, hopefully I just had the coughing fit done, um, during the last presentation, I've had a cold, thankfully it's not COVID, but um, I apologize in advance if I cough or need to take a, a glass of water here. Um, just really very grateful for the opportunity to speak with you tonight about a recently conducted, um, survey. Um, as noted, my name is Joe Donovan, um, and our firm is the Donovan Group. We've, we've had the great pleasure of working with the district over many years, including doing a number of surveys. The survey that was conducted that I'm going to review, uh, with you in a moment, really kind of builds on, um, some of that work with you. So I'm going to start, um, really reviewing the document at a high level, it's in your board pack, and I'm going to start with the methodology in a moment. I'm going to go quickly, I'm very happy to take, um, some questions in the end, and I'm going to have kind of four key, uh, thoughts at the end after I review the survey. So with that, um, I will, um, jump in. Again, for those of you who have been on the board for some time, our methodology is very similar, uh, this time, almost exactly this time, as what we've done, uh, in the past. Uh, the survey was, uh, done using, um, our online survey system. Um, respondents came in and could take the survey online if our copies were available. Um, oh, generally don't talk a lot about it, but I should mention that we go to some lengths to ensure that people have an opportunity to take the survey once, but not more than once. Um, again, to encourage residents to take the survey, the district set up postcard, uh, to the community. And also the district used some of its other channels to encourage and invite people to take the survey. The survey was open from the eighteenth of April to the twenty-ninth of April. One thing that I should note, uh, just as I always do with this type of survey, is that this survey is based on what we call a convenient survey. That is, we want everyone in the district community to participate. We don't use a sample or a stratified sample, and so, um, it, it's not a scientific survey in that we don't, um, do regression analysis or predictive analysis or, um, or calculate error. Um, that said, as I'm going to mention in a second, our respondent pool is very solid and we feel very good about that. A total of three thousand four hundred and thirty-two community members completed the survey online. Um, this included sixty-two respondents who completed the survey, um, in Spanish. Now, in a moment, board members, I'm going to give you some numbers and again, I'm going to go at a high level. But it's important, I think, for me to describe the different ways that I'm going to present the data. Um, and so, um, and by the way, we're redoing our, uh, our, our survey report, so this is kind of the, uh, this is the last of the old way of our presenting this, this data, so it's going to be a little clearer, I apologize for this, it can be a little confusing. For each number, for each question, you're going to see the first set of data, as you go from the left, is going to be the all respondent number. That all respondent number is just as it sounds, it's the percentage of, that represents the entire respondent pool. Um, again, an all respondent, uh, group. The second set of data, which if you print it in color or looking at it in color, uh, it's blue, the second set includes responses from what we call a comparison group. These are district residents that are not currently parents of preschool or school-aged students. This group is not employees and are not students. Um, so the comparison group, um, can include parents of former district students, but it's not parents of students who are currently in the school. I'm going to stop there and I'm going to, to, um, note why we have a comparison group. We've been doing this for a very long time and whenever we do surveys for a referendum, we always know that people who are parents, employees, people who are the closest to the school, tend to be, tend to favor a, a referendum. Whereas at, at rates that are higher than people who maybe aren't as close to the school district. And so that comparison group allows us to understand and allows us to measure maybe what people who, again, don't have a, a connection to the school district may think. Now, one final set of numbers, you're going to see this for some of them, it's going to be a weighted group. Um, this is something that we just started doing. In most communities, when we see on election day, seventy percent of people who go to the polls do not have a connection to the school district, seventy percent of people are people, I always use my mom as an example, it's been a very long time since her children were in school. But you, you, you better believe that she's going to be voting on election day. And so she's in the comparison group, and so we create a weighted number that's seventy, that, that's weighted, um, higher. Um, and it's seventy thirty for our comparison group versus our parents and others who would be outside the comparison group. So we'll talk a little bit more about that in a second. I will tell you that, again, that because this is not a scientific survey, uh, survey, it's not a, it's not a poll that's using a scientific sample, it can't be predictive. I will tell you that just about in every situation, including when we've done survey work with the district in the past, um, it ends up being fairly close to reality. So with that, I will just jump in. Um, I am on page three, if you're following along, we start with what is your age? One of the things that's really important, I'll just say off the bat, that we were very pleased to see is when we see in our all respondent group fifteen point two-four percent of all respondents, um, were sixty-five and older, that is remarkable and it's, it's terrific, because the hardest group that we have are people who, again, don't have a strong connection to the school district, and so that we receive, uh, fifteen point two-four is outstanding. Um, the next question is where do you reside? Again, this, uh, largely mirrors, as we understand, the population of the school district, fairly consistent with what we've seen before. Going on to page four, how long have you lived in the school district? Again, this generally mirrors our age question. Um, in this question, again, we usually have under-representation for people who are at the upper end of the limit here, in this case, more than thirty years, have great representation there. In some cases, in this one, it would have been nice maybe to have a few more at fewer than ten years, but that's not a worry of ours. Again, board members, we have a very good respondent pool. The next question, question number four, is what we call a sorter question. This is a question that we've asked, uh, with your, um, uh, with, with members of your community many times before. And we asked them using kind of a opportunity to check different, um, options. Their, their characteristics from if they have school-aged children, if they have preschool-aged children, if they have children who currently attended the district, children who open enrolled in another district, grandchildren, whether they've attended, whether they're a community member who's never had a child in the district, whether they're currently a student, an employee, or in, or in some cases, other. Here again, you're going to see, um, just as we just about always do, that we have strong representation from people who have, um, uh, school-aged children and as you'll see in a moment, children in the district. But again, this suggests a good, healthy respondent pool. Question number five gives us a sense of where, um, the children, uh, go to school. Again, it's our understanding this, this roughly reflects, um, um, reality, what the universe is in the district. Um, no big surprises there. Um, starting with six, um, this always is a very important question, right? I'm satisfied with the Green Bay area school district. Here sixty-nine percent of respondents and more than sixty-four percent of the comparison group, um, said that they were satisfied with the school district. I will stop there and say, these are very strong numbers. We have seen over COVID that these numbers, um, with districts, um, have gone down, these are very solid. Um, also, we only had seven percent of all respondents and eleven percent said that they strongly disagreed. So again, we always have work to do, but again, these numbers are, are better than we typically see. Number seven is a question, where do people get, um, their information about the school district? Of course, if you were to add all of these, this is going to be over one hundred percent, because people could choose more than one. Um, one thing that I always like to note, um, here, again, nothing terribly surprising, um, but I always find that it's interesting to look at the difference between newspaper readership for our all respondent group at twenty-two point five-five versus forty-four point three-nine for our, um, comparison group. So again, we tend to see local newspaper readership being higher, especially among, um, our, uh, older residents. But newspapers still a very important piece, but I will also add that twenty-nine percent of your comparison group, um, gets news about the school districts through social media. So again, an important piece here. One thing board members that I always like to note is to keep in mind that, um, sometimes those social media numbers and sometimes the district mailings are a little bit inflated, because people would have learned about the survey through social media or through district mailings, but these are, these are about what we, we would expect and I think consistent with what we've seen over time. Number eight, um, is a question, again, that we've asked for, how familiar are you with the district's facility needs? Um, this, I think, is very telling, seventy-six percent of your all respondent group and a similar, um, number of your comparison group indicated that they were well-informed or at least had some familiarity. This is a very good sign, um, and it's in part a good sign, board members, because this is one of those questions where we have seen through the turbulence of COVID nineteen, that people in some districts, especially those comparison group members, have lost touch with their school district. Um, your responding group seems to be, to be well-connected here, so again, solid numbers there. Um, the twenty-three percent for each, um, shows that, you know, there's some work to do, um, if you were to move forward with a referendum. At this point, some information is shared about the district's facility needs, here I'm on page seven, um, at, at, uh, question nine. Um, and some information is shared about the district's facility needs. And here we use, um, a five-point scale, this is again, consistent with what we've done with surveys in the district before. Um, more than eighty-three percent of our all respondent group and nearly seventy-six percent of the comparison group indicated that they would support a referendum to address deferred, the, delayed or deferred maintenance, um, facility needs. Very strong support. Um, I will tell you that I don't always love, we've been doing it forever this way and, and I think that it works here. Um, and I, and it's, there's a value, I think, in, in having good, strong longitudinal data. But I encourage you on, on question number nine, um, that no opinion, look at how low that no opinion is across the board. Um, four point eight for our all respondent group, only four point nine-three for our comparison group. Um, so people aren't saying, you know, I don't have an opinion about this, people are very happy to, to weigh in. Strong support, um, for a referendum. Ten, I would support a referendum that includes projects to include spaces and secondary schools that include renovations to classrooms, music rooms, auditoriums, et cetera. Upgrades could include seating, lighting, sound systems, et cetera, and that corresponded with some information. Again, nearly eighty-three percent of all, uh, respondents would support a referendum that includes projects to improve space in secondary schools, um, renovations to classrooms, music rooms, et cetera. Um, our comparison group drops a little. Um, that's, that's usually, we, we often do see, um, support drop faster with our comparison group, but it's still at seventy-two percent, that's a very strong number. Question number eleven, I would support a referendum that includes projects to improve locker rooms, weight rooms, concession stands, tennis courts, track and baseball, softball fields, et cetera. Upgrades could include bleachers, lighting, sound systems, et cetera. So here, seventy percent of our all respondent group would support a referendum that would include those items. Our comparison group drops to fifty-six percent. Again, that's still, of course, majority, um, but you see a pretty sizable dip there. Um, I will tell you that usually we see, when, it, it, it's a, typically that we step these referendum questions like this. Uh, we typically see more of a loss, um, between those two questions, typically it's a twenty-point loss or more and we don't have that here. Again, good numbers, um, lower than what we saw for the previous question. Twelve, I would support a referendum that adds turf fields to Preble and West, um, to provide equity and greater access to the fields for students, athletes, um, and community organizations. Uh, for this, if we combine again, strongly and agree and agree, we're at sixty-seven percent of all respondents compared to fifty-eight percent for comparison group members, strong support. Thirteen, I would support a referendum that adds turf to West High School and make stadium improvements, even though the property is owned by the city. Um, fifty-six percent of all respondents, um, and fifty-two percent of the comparison group said that they would support it. So again, when we start getting to, you know, um, for that comparison group, close to, uh, close to the fifty percent, um, you know, we, we really start paying attention, we pay attention to all of them, but again, you can see how, again, the, the support drops. Um, as an aside, I think that, um, from a, from a survey, uh, person's standpoint, the survey is acting as it should, right? We're, that's, maybe not be terribly surprised that we would see some support, um, drop at that point. Number fourteen, I support a referendum that upgraded, replaced older playground equipment, we're back up to significant support. Eighty-four percent for all respondents, seventy-three percent for the comparison group, when we combine the strongly and agree, uh, and agree. Um, and again, our, no opinion for all of these questions, very, uh, very low, except for on twelve, on number thirteen. Look at how, again, going back to the turf fields at, at, um, West High School, much higher than they were for the other categories. We'll go back to fifteen, I would support a referendum that upgraded, replaced older park, uh, playground equipment that's located in the city park. And eighty-five percent for our all respondents, sixty-four percent for our comparison group. Um, sixteen, we're almost done here, I would support a referendum that improved district-owned, uh, in-city-owned playgrounds by adding ADA accessibility equipment and poured in place rubber playground surfaces. Eighty-two percent for all respondent groups, seventy-three percent for our comparison group. One last question, one last item that was, um, included in the survey and we, we, uh, often, uh, do that with the survey, is that we allow for an open-ended question at the end of the survey, where we just say, hey, please provide additional feedback, uh, for the Board of Education. Here, uh, for this particular question, we spent a lot of time looking at these open respondent, uh, questions. Again, we didn't have as much participation as we typically do, keep in mind, um, that we had, what, um, thirty-four hundred people take the, to, uh, start the survey. Um, and this is, this was not a required question, seven hundred and fifty people used the opportunity to provide some information. We did not see strong themes, but a few, what we would call, um, more minor themes were considering using the capital maintenance budget to address these issues rather than a referendum. Uh, that's, that's something, again, that we see, um, you know, fairly often. The, a smaller, um, group, um, wanted some additional, uh, project added such as, um, auditorium upgrades, leak ropes, mental health supports for students and staff and some special education needs. Um, there were, as a minor theme, um, concern too much focus on sports and again, a minor theme about trying to address these. And again, a minor theme about trying to address these challenges with rising inflation, the war that that it, you know, that we've seen. And again, that that's increasingly becoming an item that we're seeing on all of our survey results. Board members, before I, before I turn things over and ask for your questions, that there are maybe four kind of big takeaways. If I could that I might suggest, again, as I've noted, strong support for a referendum across the board. Not is not the kind of what we would call turbulence that we often see in kind of this, this, this end of hopefully the end of the pandemic that we're seeing in in some districts. These numbers looked frankly, and the responses looked a lot like they were when we've done previous surveys for the district. So not, not significant difference. I'm hoping that maybe this is the, may maybe this is the the light that we've been looking for in, in, as it relates to getting past some of the turbulence that we're seeing in districts where we do survey work. I would say that the number of responses is consistent with our two thousand sixteen and two thousand nineteen surveys. And I would say very, very positive response to again, the the improvements that you've that you've outlined. I know you have a busy agenda, so forgive me for going super fast. But I'd be very happy to take any questions that that you may have.
I think this was great. I appreciate you going very fast because we do have a very full agenda, but I think you did a really thorough job in walking through everything for us, so I appreciate it. Any questions? You're good, Nancy? Okay. I think this was very good. Thank you so much, Joe, for joining us tonight.
Thanks for the opportunity to work with you. Have a great evening, everyone.
You too, thanks.
Goodbye.
Okay. And now we have Chad here for the Safe Walk and Bike Annual Report.
Yes, thank you. I'm Chad Jensen, Director of Transportation. And last year I was able to provide an update for the Safe Walk and Bike Plan. And this year I'm grateful to do that again. We do that on an annual basis. And attached to the board agenda, you'll see a copy of the the actual report. It's just a high level summarization of what kind of happened. I just want to start out and give a little bit of an overview again this year of what this is and just a couple of high points from the, from this past year. So in the, in the report, you'll find a number of different things. But again, really, the vision of this group is to provide equitable options that empower all people to walk and bike in our community. So it's not just for the school, but it's a collaborative effort between any different agencies. And that would include the district, the city. We have technical experts, nonprofit agencies involved, elected officials. And we really try to implement the five E's. Education, encouragement, engineering enforcement, and evaluation in the, in the plan itself. All looking through the equity lens. Again, we really tried to work for all of the community. This was something in twenty nineteen that was passed unanimously by the school board along with this Green Bay City Council. So it's just been a lot of effort and work that was brought forward prior to my arrival here. So I've been able to move it along or be part of. And unfortunately, the last couple of years with COVID, my hope is that in the future, as we move into more of a non-COVID environment, we'll be able to get more events and in person things done. But I am proud to report what we have tonight. So one of the offshoots, just to make mention, last week, Wednesday, May fourth, we had our district book to school day. And we had some involvement. And again, we're just getting things kind of going again. And one of the schools, MacArthur, had a couple of the TV, local TV stations even come through and do some interviews and kind of do some of those things. We've got one of the middle schools going to be looking at next week, picking up and just kind of working with their group on kind of a school drive on that. So it's been encouraging and I hope for good weather for them next week also. Okay, so one of the, one of the highlights was that there we added, they added and upgraded all the pedestrian accommodations at seven, seven signaled intersections along West Mason Corridor, running from the Fox River to Interstate forty one. And what this provided was the push buttons and countdown timers at all those locations. So it's a huge safety improvement for a real busy corridor for those that are using, using that for this type of transport. Also, there's been insulate installation of the RRFBs, they're called rectangular rapid flashing beacons. And you see those in different areas to draw attention. It's one of the most highly effective tools to help safely get pedestrians across roads. So that's been great. And there is four significant areas that I'm just going to quick highlight. Baird Street at the intersection of Stewart Street, which is near Washington Middle School. So that's a nice impact for our students and and parents and staff and anyone who's using that area along with Ninth Street at Cross Avenue. And that's basically in the Beaumont Elementary area. So it's really a useful tool there also, helping aid students as they are in a non-bus walk area to get to school to and from. Just the other, other areas, this is a quick note, Dulcetman Street at Murphy Drive and then North Irwin Avenue at Bay Beach Road. And and obviously, that's near the Bay Beach amusement park. Wellow, the second item here, I just want to quick cover, Wellow is a nonprofit organization big in a number of different things for the wellness of the area. They use what they consider frauder events, and that's kind of bringing law enforcement from the area together to highlight a couple of different dates. They did it one day in June, July and August. So at three different occasions, they really tried to bring the enforcement and bring an awareness to, to drivers. And that was something that was very successful, where they were able to talk and and bring forward that message to a number of people. The other piece with with Wellow, I just wanted to draw attention to is that they, they were named a finalist for the twenty twenty one Robert Wood Johnson Foundation Culture of Health. And it's one of the nation's largest philanthropely devoted to health. And this is their most prestigious community award. So and part of the reason I bring it up is because the reviewers ultimately pointed out that the innovative partnership between the city of Green Bay, the Green Bay Area Public Schools and the community collaborators that developed this, this plan that's in front of us was a major factor in that designation. So I just think we can certainly join, join with them in that accomplishment that they were able to receive that. The other item that kind of it's looked at at like bicycles. And in the community, you'll see a number of e-scooters parked along the roads. So I just wanted to quick highlight that because I know that's a real big community item that a lot of people see these scooters parked in different spots. And quite frankly, a lot of us don't have the understanding of what exactly is going on with some of those. They're from the bird, it's called a bird company, and you download an app. And you can put money on it and you scan it with your phone. And there's some different things. But when you do that with the app, it allows you to utilize it for a certain period of time for different costs and whatnot. And then you can park it in designated parks. So and so you see them in different places. And, you know, if you're like me, your mind will say, well, why did they park it there? But designated park areas, or they left it in a spot that they weren't supposed to. But they have the record of the person that was using it. So they can, you know, talk with them and instruct and educate. Or and or if it ultimately happens too often, they can, you know, revoke their privilege to do that. So that's just a little bit about that. Last year, a couple of numbers, there was over twenty eight thousand rides in a, which is quite a high number, I thought. And there was forty one thousand miles that was covered with these e-scooters. So that was a pretty neat feat. So I think this is really great for our community. This summer, they plan with COVID down, they plan to bring the e-bikes back. I guess it started with the e-bikes and and they kind of focused on the scooters. So they'll have both of those as options. And then just as a last note on these scooters, they're to use the bike lanes, they're basically like bicycle. So they're not to be on sidewalks to adhere by, just like a bicyclist would. And just to close, a significant focus of the Safe Walk and Bike Plan is the continued evaluation of our collective efforts as a community. The committee will continue to produce annual reports, and I'll come before you each year just to give you an update. Just kind of talking about some of the accomplishments, the opportunities that might be coming. The plans, again, is supporting the people who live, work, learn, play and visit our community. And the this plan also is going before the Plan Commission tonight. And next week it'll go to the City Council just for an informational update, so it hits all three different groups. So I just appreciate your time, so thank you.
Now you have Eric on here as a representative from the school board. Do we need to replace him with a current member or?
That's a great question. I did see that also as I was reviewing the the report. I'll, I'll talk with them. He was unable to make many of the meetings. But again, it was just a different time with COVID and not being in person. So I think that kind of played a role into it. I'll do some looking into that and get back to you. So thank you.
Brian, you had a question?
I do. And I know this is something that's been addressed for many years. I'm looking at the rectangular rapid flashing beacons, and I've noticed driving through the area that they're very effective with it. Who, who determines where those are placed? And like what, who has the final responsibility for that? I'm looking particularly on Monroe and Aldo, where there's always been, there's been some concerns over the last several years about traffic patterns and this drive further into the pier. You see that they're, they're in the pier. So the question of whether it's a state highway or not, I'm just wondering who has the final decision on that and how does it proceed?
Yeah, great question, thank you. So the recommendation can go before the, this group, and I can bring that forward and just kind of talk through that. Ultimately, it just depends if it's a state highway or what the jurisdiction of some of those pieces are to determine who to talk with. So it'd just be a collaboration between which law enforcement and then if whatever board would need to get involved as far as that final decision. So I think it varies a little bit with each infrastructure.
Follow up. So there would be a good, so it would be with the city being in city limits and with it being a highway that could possibly change it, but with other jurisdictions having it, there's a way. But it's the cities.
Yes, it, I can't speak for how that would ultimately play out, right? But certainly I will talk with the planner, who is definitely involved in regards to being a real large piece of this committee, so I'll talk with her.
Okay, any other question, Laura?
So back when this was being talked about and when it was being passed, I was part of that process, kind of in the tail end of that. And first of all, it's just a wonderful project. It's kind of, you know, in the broadest sense, a partnership with our community. So many people are involved in it. One of the things I've always really, really liked about it is that it's designed to never be finished. It's like it's an ongoing project, it's going to keep getting better and it's going to keep changing. I like the fact that it's not, not finished ever. The other thing that I really like about it is that anytime the city has, is going to upgrade its infrastructure, it has to refocus this plan. It has to look at this plan and and it has to, you know, it has to implement things that were decided in this plan. So, you know, it could be, you know, we could be dealing with this plan twenty years, thirty years from now, the guidance that was discussed, you know, was decided on when this plan was formulated. And that has always struck me as a really interesting way to approach this work, which, again, never done, never going to be finished. But always in play. So, and you might want to comment, thank you.
Yes, thank you. I, I, I agree that ongoing dialogue is, is great.
Okay, anyone else? Thank you, Chad. Okay, and then next we have our facilities and related services update, and we have Mike Stankel joining us for that.
Before I start with that, Brian, I can maybe give you a little history on the lights at Aldo Leopold. Prior to Chad joining the district, we had conversations, we're working with the city traffic department. Dave Hanson, the city engineer. We did request them at one time and they refused or denied our request. But I think that since that request was put in three, four years ago, things have changed quite, quite a bit. And now we're seeing them around town, so it's a good opportunity to go back and re-request it. Okay. So I'm just here to give you a little bit of background on a facilities department, who we are and what we do. So anyway, the facilities department basically oversees all aspects of buildings and grounds. There's forty three buildings. Now that I'm just counting our major buildings, we look at all of our old buildings, like concession stands, restrooms, storage buildings, there's many more than that. Right now, we have over four, four million two hundred thousand square feet of buildings. When I started with the district in two thousand and five, we're a little over three million square feet of buildings. So in the last, you know, seventeen years, the square foot of buildings increased by twenty five percent. And that has a lot to do with, you know, we've added five buildings since then, buildings like Da Vinci, Manoka Hill, Cherry Street Building, N W and J Dall, buildings like Baird that drastically increased. And then we have about three hundred and seventy seven thousand, three hundred and seventy seven hundred acres of land. Which for our school district, our size and that, that amount, that is very a small amount. I mean, we, I know school districts, that's just their high school sites are a hundred acres. So it shows we have a lot of buildings, but a lot of very small sites. So our responsibilities, we oversee, you know, all aspects of the buildings, grounds and maintenance, custodial services, those under us. The district security, fire alarm and card access systems are part of our department along with the heating, ventilating equipment. And then we oversee the energy conservation for the district. We're responsible for any renovations, construction projects that take place, any of the buildings. We oversee the district abatement program. Over the years, you know, most of the this has been removed from the district. But so we have some other floor tile. And in some areas, we have like pipe coverings that were involved and stuff that, you know, aren't exposed until we actually do some type of renovation. We maintain the district's fleets, fleet of vehicles. The district has two pools that we maintain. If there's any pest problems. Um, if there's any pest problems, um, you know, where we see, you know, with a lot more eating in the classrooms and stuff like that, we have to watch some, you know, for the ants and those types of things that can come along with um more food in the in the buildings. Um, removal of waste and recycling, we take care of and the building rentals. So if outside groups are even in um internal groups, uh, want to rent any of our auditoriums or gymnasiums or anything, we oversee that. Um, the facility departments has hundred and eighty six employees. Um, and how it breaks down, we have ten building engineers, those are our day people and maintain our buildings at our secondary schools, high schools, middle schools, Red Smith and District Office. Um, thirty four facility technicians, those are elementary schools. Um, they're basically a combination between a building engineer, same in the building, but they also do custodial work during the day. Um, so they help out with lunch and setting up and cleaning up. Eighteen day and midday custodial shifts. People, those again are secondaries and they work along with their building engineers and again, they do clean throughout the day. Um, they come in early and open up the buildings, make sure the sidewalks are shoveled, those types of things. A twelve tradespeople, carpenters, electricians, plumbers, technicians, uh, electronics technician, and I'll get into more details on these. Utility workers, which is our outside grounds crew, painter utilities, which is our night painters, who support our utility workers, um, vehicle to vehicle maintenance and uh uh maintenance mechanic, which does fabricating and steel and concrete work for us. So for custodial services, um, basically their responsibility, their main responsibility is for cleaning and sanitizing and making sure that entire buildings are disinfected and cleaned nightly. Um, they support, you know, the lunch program during the day, breakfast and lunch. And um they also support any events during the day or in the evenings, so they'll set up, take on um they're re- they're responsible for the removal of any trash and recyclables and safety, so um our people through the days um are responsible for keeping basically the entrances cleared of of snow and make sure they're salted so that they're not slippery. Um, our outside crews does the main plowing, you know, the lots and the the um drives. Um, they're also responsible for steering the buildings, so our people come in and open the buildings in the morning and then they secure them in the evenings, except for at our middle schools where we have a twenty four hour staff. So those buildings basically opened at six o'clock on Mondays and locked at six AM on Saturdays. The custodial crew is a twelve month employee, so they work year round. Uh, summer is actually one of our busier times. Um, a lot of staff, you know, at the end of the school year feel, you know, they have a little break either, and at this time, we kind of ramp up some of our services. So, um, we support a lot of the programs taking place during summer, summer school, uh, sports camps, and any other um, programs that take place rentals throughout the summer. Um, it's a time that we do our very deep cleaning. Uh, we work around summer school, so we'll clean the schools first that don't have summer school and then we'll shift step around and go back. But basically, it's every room gets completely emptied out, all the furniture, everything gets scrubbed. Everything gets put back in the room, uh, floors are scrubbed and washed and waxed. And then we also do our refinishing of our gym, wood gym floors during the summer. So just to go through, um, the next ones are our carpenters. So our carpenters um do a lot of different projects from small things like going in classrooms and putting up bulletin boards and whiteboards, fixing cabinet doors to actually building cabinets, um, desks, like they've come in here and, you know, built the the cabinets tree in here. We did all the ceiling work and the lighting work in here, so we do small projects, uh, large construction projects like our school and stuff, of course, that get contracted out, but uh, there's a lot of small projects that we can do. Uh, one of our carpenters is a locksmith. Uh, he probably spends ninety nine point nine percent on locks and doors. Uh, you can imagine we have tens of thousands of doors and locks in this district and just maintaining them all. Uh, since we brought him on board, uh, we're getting a handle on our keys up until then. Keys were requested at buildings, they were made and sent to buildings. Now every key is identified, has is marked and is checked out to a person, so everyone has a unique number on them. So, we're trying to get better at uh control on who actually has keys. We have master electricians, again, they can, being a master electrician, they can permits for us. Um, so we can do, you know, projects like relighting this room or um actually do a small construction project and they can do all the electrical that's uh required and the same thing with our master plumber, um, so he can actually do construction. Um, but a lot of times if we one plumber and you can imagine the amount of sinks and toilets and uh things we have in the district. Um, and then some of our, you know, uh, project, our buildings are getting aged. So, a lot of times we have to completely renovate uh bathrooms and toilet rooms and take all the fixtures and reach with the plumbing just to keep it updated. Uh, we have several H V C technicians. Um, the first one, it's, we call him, he's a kind of on the air side, so he worked ma- basically with the air handlers and the chillers and um, he also works with the food service on their coolers and freezers. And that's not only at the A S B, but it's also at all the schools. Uh, then we have a, um, when the specialized in the boilers and he maintains and repairs about ninety three uh different boilers that we have at all of our schools. And uh, most of our schools have multiple boilers. And next slide, Beth. And these boilers have to be tested on a annual basis and by state, state inspectors come in and work with us. And then we have an um H V C technician that oversees our controls. Um, this is also an important position, he comes in at six AM and reviews every single school to make sure that the rooms are at their set points. Um, if there's problems with, you know, a uh a building being too cold or too hot, um, he'll check and make sure the program is right. May have to go up to the building and there might be a valve stuck or a damper that's not working properly. So all of the, even all these, each um H V C technician kind of specialty, they all kind of work as a group and help each other out depending on what kind of projects are going on. Sometimes they're having to get together and replace pumps or fans, motors, those types of things. Um, then we have a maintenance mechanic, again, he's the fourth person on the team that assesses these, but his major focuses on uh keeping food service equipment running. And he spends a lot of time out there, um, on their wrapping machines, um, their kettles, um, other specialty dishwashers, um, and then he goes around to the different schools, helping on those also. Um, and then our electrician, uh, electronics technician, um, basically he works with our security systems, fire alarms, um, access control sound systems, he works, you know, goes in the auditoriums and adjusts any problems we're having with those type uh sound systems, the P A systems with throughout the school. And then he, you know, he also supports technology, so a lot of times if technology needs a data drop, brought into a um, into a classroom or into office, um, he'll install those also. Next slide. Um, then our utility painters, um, so these are our utility workers are day people that work on the outside, um, so they respond for um grounds maintenance. Um, they mow uh eight million four hundred thousand square feet of lawns and do snow plowing for a million six hundred thousand square feet of parking lots and a- a low over eight, uh, seven hundred square feet of uh playground, so um, it's a lot of territory to cover. Um, they also maintain our playgrounds, so you know, we have broken swings, those types of things, avoid and fix those, um, maintain the surfaces. So all the playgrounds except for the two heads are pro- grounds have chipped, so those um woodchips have to get maintained annually. Um, they support twenty three district fields, those are football fields, soccer fields, baseball, softball, um, but then we use a lot of the city fields. So we have a um, a joint agreement that we can use some of the fields and we help stripe them and maintain um, the city will cut them, but um, we still help, you know, drag the fields, those types of things to get those ready since we're using their field. So there's twenty seven of those fields that they also use in the district, so like this spring has been very difficult with all the wet, just trying to get sports fields, um, baseball fields and uh soccer fields and condition this summer or this spring. Um, they're responsible also, they in the winter, a lot of times they'll do trimming and pruning of bushes and maintenance of that during the um, winter and some in the summer. Um, I know in the last couple of years, we've had to remove over fifty um ash trees from the district that have been affected with M R O ash, so that's been a big job. Um, we have, they maintain irrigation systems on our fields. And um, and then besides that, they fill in for a facility tech, so um, this year has been challenging. You know, with a lot of people out covid, um, even a couple of staff. So when um, we need people to go to the buildings, they're all trained to fill in. Uh, we do our own internal subbing for all our custodial and all of our, we don't um have any other subbing except for internal people. Next slide, um, then we have two vehicle mechanics. Um, they're responsible for maintaining all of our equipment that's used inside and outside. So some of the equipment inside are lifts that we use, um, floor scrubbers, all that. But then we have um eighty trucks and heavy equipment that we use for snow bl- um, snow plowing. Um, we have work trucks, vans that you see that they drive around, um, student transportation vans and there's in the food service delivery trucks. And then we have other equipment like tractors and skidsters and lawn mowers that um, we use for just maintaining, cutting grass and snow plowing and maintaining the the property. Plus then they do um all the small equipment also, like snow blowers, each building has walk behind snow blower, leaf blowers, chainsaws. So, um, there's always, the shop is always full of equipment being taken care of. Along with they go up to the buildings and maintain the emergency generators at all of those schools that have emergency generators along with uh A S B and District Office. So just, that's basically our, our staff, and the next slide are projects that we've, some of the projects we completed now, we complete, you know, three, four times this amount, but a lot of them are small projects where we'll go in and replace a door that's broken or some cabinets, fix some cabinets or in a classroom, we might um, have to replace some windows that are broken. So there's a lot of projects that are taken, but just some of the bigger projects to highlight. As annual basis, we try to put my away to keep maintaining, so we do a district wide flooring and um repair and replacement every year. So we try to chip off and do the worst florings on that we we know of. Same thing with um site repairs, so site repairs includes not only damage of, you know, sodding brass, but um, there might be just sections of asphalt that need to be cut out and replaced. And we can do that without replacing the entire parking lot. Um, we use a lot of this also for seal coating, re-strating. And then district Biden ma- masonry and duct pointing is just an ongoing thing that we're always um making sure because we're trying to keep the buildings watertight, um, our worst enemy is, you know, leaking roofs and windows and and masonry. Uh, this year we replaced the roof at King Elementary, uh, we replaced the parking lots at East High School. Um, auxiliary services building Franklin Middle School, Lombardi Middle School and Lincoln Elementary. Uh, we did a window replacement at Hall Elementary. Um, we did a culinary arts lab at East High School, if you've gone over there, I think that turned over well, turning. We did a complete L E D replacement um at Preble High School, East High School and Southwest High School. Those are very large projects, um, library renovations at our high schools, Preble East, West, Southwest and Red Smith. And flooring replacement in offices at Preble, um, office and student services at West and in the Commons at Hall, and then we just are completing up the locker insta- installation at Webster. Now these projects are all done out of our operating fund ten project, none of this is referendum money, this is our annual um, operating money. So just give you a look at what we're looking at for next year, on the next slide is our twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three projects, and again, these are the major projects, I don't put every small project on. But again, we're looking at district wide flooring, um, site repairs and asphalt maintenance and um, masonry, which we do every year. Um, this year, we're gonna be doing some repair work on the McCullough and Smith roofs and a roof replacement on Franklin. Uh, we're gonna be replacing the parking lots at uh N E W J D O on the Cherry Street site. Edison, Eisenhower, Southwest and Da Vinci per um will be doing um parking lot replacements. Uh, at West High School, that's a joint um tennis court. So we're splitting the cost with the city to resurface that uh tennis court. Um, that's part of our joint uh use agreement with the city. Uh, we have some door replacements, entrance door replacements at Franklin and Washington. Uh, we're gonna replace all the flooring in the two commons at Franklin and Washington. Um, here at the District Office, we have to replace the air handler in our auto shop. And then we're looking at starting some renovation, um, the Welcome Center, trying to put some windows in there and trying to lighten it up and get a little bit more modern and more welcoming. So that's pretty much what I have to present on who we are and kind of what we do. If you have any questions, I would be happy to a- answer those.
Brian?
Uh, Mike, I have two, uh, one statement and then a question with it. Um, I spent a lot of time in Green Bay schools and I've spent a lot of time in other schools and the facilities department. These buildings are top notch as far as cleanliness and everything on a consistent basis, your staff's doing a fantastic job, so thank you for doing that. My follow up question with this is, when like you had said that staff was able to sub internally for different positions at times, uh, especially during covid, I know obviously there's been either a formal or an informal practice of um kind of training within, so our employees can move up into positions if they open up. Um, particularly in the facilities department, is there a formal program with that or is that something that can be addressed with it, so we aren't losing our employees if we don't need to and that we're not necessarily bringing in people from outside the district that haven't first understand the Green Bay way?
We have a informal process, um, we always looked to fill it internally first, that's our our goal. Um, what we do is we have our we have the opportunity, especially in summer, with any staff that really wants to learn more about, you know, like if they're a custodian, they want to work into a facility uh technician job. If they come to us and show interest, we can, a lot of times, especially during the summer, we'll team them up with a another facility tech. And then that facility tech will work with them and show them, you know, how to take the boiler apart and how to change out some of the um filters and the unit vents are in the um V A V boxes and, you know, they'll work with them. So we've, I would say that the majority are of our positions, well over fifty percent, when it's a an up, uh, step up position are filled internally.
James?
Yes, I just see a twenty twenty-one, twenty-two project for LED light replacement at the three high schools. Can you describe, is this part of a larger initiative to replace all bowls with LEDs? And where are we in that initiative? Because I don't see anything scheduled for next year to continue.
Yes, that is a long-term goal is to switch over to LED. What we tried to handle are some of our biggest bang for the bucks, some of the big high schools. It just so happened that last year we had the available resources to do it. And so we're normally, we went to three big schools in one year. But it just so happened that we had the resources. We had other projects that came under budget. So we're, you know, given the opportunity to get more done than we normally would. But you know, our next one would be looking at doing would be West High School. And the only reason that it's not on this year's is that we felt that we probably needed to really concentrate a little bit on the welcoming center this year. Because we just felt that that was a little bit bigger need. Because of the condition, you know, the building is pretty dark and not as welcoming as we would like it to be.
Just some observations and some thoughts. You, you mentioned that we had increased our, our square footage by about twenty-five percent, I think, over the last few years. Now, some of that, some of that was referendum work. I know we added a lot of community space that benefits the whole entire community, which I'm, I, I know that's been really beneficial. Do you, and then some of the gymnasiums that were used also as lunchrooms, which is really hard. Do we have any schools anymore that still use their gyms as lunchrooms? And how, like, how many?
Okay, I can't.
I'm sorry to put you on the spot.
Yeah, I can't remember exactly how many we have, but we do still have some. One that comes to mind right now is Chapel, Kennedy, MacArthur. So I can, you know, I would have to kind of go through school by school. But there's still, I'm thinking there's sixty-eight of them approximately.
I know the last referendum addressed some of that in some of our schools and it's a, it's a lot to build a whole new gym. You know, it's, it's a lot of money, but and then the other thing that stood out was a hundred and eighty-six employees. I, I look at that number and I think that just sort of illustrates the scope of the work that you do and how huge our district is. And a lot of that seems, a lot of that work often seems invisible, like it just happens by magic, even though we all know it doesn't. But I, I, you know, it's just a monumental job that, that you and your people do. I always think about, when I think about our district and the buildings, just the maintenance of it, I always think of that as a, as an investment that our taxpayers have made for generations in our, in our district. And that proper maintenance respects that investment. And I agree with Brian, our buildings are just a pleasure to walk into. And I, I always, I often notice how well maintained they are and how beautiful they are often. So I just want to say thank you and kudos to you and your, and your, and your crew. It's, it's really interesting to see the full scope that you showed of what they do and what's required to keep our buildings in tip-top shape. So, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, we have some, you know, we have very excellent crew. You know, it's amazing even to myself, even working alongside them that you know, we'll get a snow flo, snow storm or, and you know, four or five inches of snow. And you know, they'll be out all night and they'll have the entire district of forty sites cleared and ready to go by six AM. They have it down pretty pat and now the one thing during COVID, the, I guess if you want to look at the bright side of it, it gave us some chance to really go through and do a lot of internal work. One thing that we did is we went through and re-polished and stripped and re-polished and resealed into all the trash on the district. And that's something that we just put our crews at and worked on that for a few months. And you know, you look, you've been just walking the district office and you look at our trash all here. I mean, it's over a hundred years old and it still looks pretty good. I mean, there's some cracks and stuff, but for a hundred-year-old flooring, it's in pretty good shape.
I agree with you very much. Thank you so much.
Just a new board member question real quick. All of your budget, does it go through account twenty-seven in the budget? Under construction quarters? Most, okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Yes, please.
I'm not sure if all of you are aware, but Mr. Stengel has submitted his retirement. And as of July one, will no longer be an employee with the district. And I did want to take a second to acknowledge, he holds so much information in that head about every single piece of property that we own and it's going to be a great loss for us. But what you acknowledged, Brian, it's in large part because of Mike's dedication to the district. Thanks, Mike.
Okay, next up, we have student fees. Angie, that's.
Thanks. So this is the recommendation to bring forward to reinstate charging student fees for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. So just a little bit of a history or a little background. We stopped and we did not charge general fees for students for the last two years due to the pandemic. So the recommendation that I'm bringing forward is to reinstate those fees. None of the fees have changed. All of the, all of the rates remain the same. And this brings in about five hundred thousand dollars into the general fund on an annual basis.
If, if a student receives free and reduced lunch, those fees are waived?
That is correct. They have to fill out a proper form in order to waive those fees, but then yes, then we can waive those fees for those students.
Any questions? Andrew?
Thank you. So some of them are, but some of them are marked unwavable.
That's, I'm sorry.
And I think there's different, different levels of, I would, I would argue that transcript fees are, are pretty essential, even though five are free for everyone. Seems to me that's the one that I think most might warrant consideration of just being a waivable fee. I, I recognize that other things like activity tickets and passes are more of a more of a gray area. The, the parking permit fee being unwavable, I guess, concerns me to some, to some extent as well. I've brought this up every year. I'm, I'm glad that over the years, we've moved more into the general, the single general waivable general fee, but I guess I'm interested in seeing if there's I won't take up a lot of time if I'm the only board member interested in it, but I would like to, I think between now and now in the board meeting, it's worth at least some discussion about transcript fee and parking fee being waivable. Refrain reduced.
Brian?
I'm going to assume that this is all put into the general fund because it would be an accounting nightmare to figure out the seventy-five dollars going into the fund for maintenance of the parking lot, for example, or any activities funds going for, you know, gated mission, going to pay for coaching riders and everything else like that. So, thank you.
Nancy, you good? Okay, any other questions or comments?
Just kind of building off what Andrea was talking about, the student activity pass. Why would that not be payable based on free and reduced lunch? And what does that actually all entail?
I'm not, I am not a hundred percent sure as to why it wasn't included in the waivable fees. I can look into that. The activity pass, I do believe in, I don't, I don't know if you know, Vicky, what that all entails. But I could check with Tim Flood as well, if you want details.
My, my thought is just that we know how important any sort of extracurricular or any activity outside of the class can be really helpful for student engagement. And we wouldn't want, I would want us to be preventative for students to be involved in those activities. But I, again, I'm not certain what that would include. So just for consideration. Thank you.
Andrew?
That is a pass to attend though. It's not a participation, participation is covered under the general fees. Now, I still think it's good for, you know, I, I would also be interested in exploring some kind of a, you know, possibly could we look at a waivable activity pass for, you know, two per, one or two per student who's doing one of the activities that would be charged for. Yeah, I, I think it's important to have, I mean, the, the most important thing is that we got rid of the pay to participate activity fee many years ago, which is the most important. But I, I think looking at making a fee waivable for the activity passes for, for families is quite possibly worth a look as well. So I, I will probably intend to propose an amendment to at least make transcript fees fully waivable at the next meeting and, and possibly some of the others. I am glad that it doesn't represent any increases over before we suspend it.
I, I'll verify this before the, the May twenty-third meeting, but I, I believe we still have the practice of the starfish fund. I don't know if that sounds familiar to you, Angie or Claudia. Okay, we, we do. So students in need can access the fund through their school social worker. So I just verified it. So we still have that.
Okay, anything else? Awesome. We are going to go on to rental fees. Okay, Vicky, do you know, is that Mike? Is that you? You're, you're back again. We, we just gave you this grand farewell and now you're back already. It's only been five minutes, Mike.
Can't get away. Basically, the rental fees were recommending just holding them the same as they have been and we're not getting any increases. Basically, we didn't rent all our buildings all through COVID. Even now, it's very minimum. So we feel that we should just keep the fees as they were from last year.
How much money do we bring in with facility rentals? Do you know?
I, I would have to get back to you on that one. I don't know the total amount.
If there's a student organization in a building, so say, well, like just said, a student organization in a building that was holding an event and it's sponsored by that organization, are the rental fees waived then?
Yes, yeah, it's, we don't rent. I mean, if there's, it's not, you know, even if like the Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts, I mean, those are waivable fees. It's, it's more or less if somebody's holding a camp and they're charging students or an outside, the symphony wants to use one of our auditoriums or a dance group wants to use. Those are more than rentals, but yeah, we don't charge our internal organizations any rentals.
Okay, we're all good. Alrighty, that concludes the operations portion of our meeting. I think we are going on to education. Next.
Education, the education section will be facilitated by Andrew Becker.
All right, thank you. We'll open with the Head Start supplemental application summary.
Okay, thank you, Andrew. And we do have Sally joining us virtually and I think Andrea is there as well.
Hi, everybody. This is Sally, joining virtually. We were, we received a letter on April twentieth from the Office of Head Start that we were eligible to receive a cost of living adjustment of ninety-five thousand, one hundred and ninety-two dollars. That supports a two point two eight percent increase above fiscal year twenty twenty-one funding levels to increase staff salaries and fringe benefits. Those funds would be effective July first, twenty twenty-two for the next school year. In addition, this year, the Office of Head Start included quality improvement funds to be used for one-time activities in fiscal year twenty-two budget period. The Head Start program would use that allocated amount of sixteen thousand, seven hundred and six thousand dollars for staff wages to offset the higher increase of four point seven percent that was approved by the school board for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. So the amount that was received, will not receive, but applied for April first, approved by the board on March, in the March board meeting was four million, one hundred and seventy-five thousand, eighty-four dollars in program operations, thirty-five thousand, six hundred and ninety for training and technical assistance. Those two amounts combined with the new funding amount of the COLA increase in quality improvement would bring our total Head Start budget amount for the twenty-two, twenty-three program year to four million, three hundred and twenty-two dollars and six hundred and seventy-two dollars. I don't even know if I said that right. The figure's so big. But anyway, so we're just seeking approval from the school board that we can submit the grant to the Office of Head Start, which is due on June first, twenty twenty-two.
All right, any questions? Okay, thank you. I'll move forward to the board meeting.
I don't want this to become a habit tonight, but I did want to acknowledge that Sally has, did she leave? No, she's there. Sally, Sally has also submitted her resignation. And the reason our Head Start programs are as big and supported in this community is because of Sally's leadership over the years. So she will be greatly missed. And I just wanted to make sure we acknowledged your work, Sally.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay, thank you. Next we have technology platforms used for learning and a recommendation memo.
Good evening. Well, I'm back and I brought some friends with me this time to answer your excellent questions. Those that work closest to the work are the better place to answer the questions that, the really awesome question you actually had the last time I was here. Really, our spearhead of this project has been the oversight of this project as director. Stephen Miller, and so all of those wonderful technical questions you were asking me and I was so forthcoming in saying that's not my forte. I leaned heavy on Stephen to bring that piece of knowledge to our team. So, Stephen, do you want to take it from here and any questions you might have? Nope, guess he doesn't. Any questions you might have since the last time we met?
New, new questions from the board? Nancy?
Well, I don't know if it's exactly a question, but it's just how I'm feeling about this. And I just, I wonder if there's really money for this because, you know, like, we're going to be going into this assessment thing and this is kind of an assessment tool and if we're gonna find out that maybe we won't need this, do we know for sure that? Like, is it going to go to the regular kids too, or is it just going to be interventionist? Do we know all of these things? And I'm just feeling that, you know, at this time, like, there's just only so many dollars, amount of dollars to go around, and I think that one point two million dollars is just a lot to me. And speaking to some of the interventionists that have used it, they, they do say, you know, it looks like it could be something really good, but then they had some other things about like, like, the narrative box, they didn't like that so much and how you can accept, access the, the the program, you know, like, it shuts down in twenty minutes versus the way they had it with the other program. And also, they missed the dropdowns for the testing, all the different testing data. And so I'm just, just a little weary about this.
I can speak to some of that. We asked the interventionists to test it so that they could give us some of that exact feedback, and we've brought them back numerous times and I have not heard that from any of them, maybe you have seen. But we would be able to work with the company to see what we can do to try to remedy those situations.
Can you hear me okay, Nancy?
I can, thank you.
All right, I'm gonna try to tackle all three, but it was three in a row. I can usually remember two pretty good, but I will do my best to get all three. So, I'll handle, I think, the easiest one first, and that's the shuts off after twenty minutes thing. So, a, a lot of our programs, and most people don't realize this, but a lot of different programs that vendors provide to us have like that inactivity shutdown, and that's actually a good security feature to have. I mean, if we feel like twenty minutes is not long enough, we could certainly reach out to the company and work with them to try to see if we can extend that window, but I, in, in my experience, I can say that twenty minutes is pretty standard across most platforms that have secure student information in them. Somebody might know differently, but twenty minutes is pretty common. I'm trying to think, you know, off the top of my head, like, when my credit union times out, but I know, like, if I leave that, you know, inactive long enough that it'll timeout. And, you know, like, the secure testing sites for state testing, that will timeout. I, I want to say it's twenty minutes of inactivity. Yeah. So, that's pretty standard. So, that was one. And then, another one was the way in which the interventionists can enter their information. So, I'm excited to hear that they're all seeing promise in the program. And what I have seen, you know, just from a feedback standpoint, is that this has galvanized a lot of our staff members to the point where they're pushing and they're saying, we could be doing so much more with this program. And what about this? And what about this? And quite honestly, I haven't seen this much excitement has galvanized so many different kinds of staff members in, in a while. And, you know, like, I get a little excited when they get excited, you know, it's nice. It's nice when we can have that back and forth. So, the, they tried to, what Panorama did, when they built their program, they tried to build a program with the student in mind first. And a lot of times, when you work with different vendors who provide dashboard type products, it's more about putting the student into a bar graph. And, you know, being able to, like, bring all that data together, and then less about what does it look like on that individual student level. And what I've seen with Panorama is they're more about writing that narrative about how that student is doing, rather than just plugging in scores, because that doesn't always represent a complete picture of the child. And so, while the narrative is in some ways limiting, one of the things that we're gonna be working with them on is other ways to bring some of those other data points that we currently have in Infinite Campus into the system, so that when teachers go in, they'll have everything right there.
Thank you, Stephen.
All right, perfect. Two I'm usually pretty good at, you're gonna have to help me with the third one. Oh, the dropdowns, oh, sure. And so, I'm guessing they're comparing that to T-SAR. And, you know, so a little bit of, of history and context that I can provide, because I've been along for this ride. When we first started tracking intervention in Green Bay, did really try to use Infinite Campus, because you should always use the tools you have. We have access to Infinite Campus as part of the package that we get. Unfortunately, Infinite Campus was a very limiting tool and a very labor-intensive tool. We heard loud and clear from our staff that had to put information in Infinite Campus, it was taking four, five, six clicks just to do an update. So, we said, well, what can we do with the resources we have? We worked with our programming team, we took a program. Some of you know about it, some of you don't. You'll hear about it before long, I'm sure, because it seems like it, it's always kind of out there, but T-SAR, which we had created, it was a homegrown product designed by our programming team, that allowed us to capture information similar to how you might enter information on a spreadsheet. But what it did is it brought that information right back into Infinite Campus. So, instead of four, five, or six clicks to do an update on each student, teachers could go in and two to three clicks, they could have a whole list of the kids that they had intervention on and do those updates. We created the dropdowns. We added comments so that they could capture robust information with not as much work and not as much time, because frankly, the more time you spend entering data, the less time you have to work with kids. The only reason we're here talking to you today is, and I've seen it, like, Panorama is gonna be better than what we've cobbled together with Infinite Campus and with T-SAR, even though we're meeting the letter of the law with those. Panorama gives us the ability to bring all of that information together in one system and make that entry and, and that monitoring process easy for the interventionists, easy for the teachers who have those kids in class to see what interventions they're in, and easy for those building administrators to monitor and track how their kids are doing in intervention. And that's the only reason why we're here today. One point two million dollars is a lot of money. But we wouldn't be bringing it forward to you if we didn't believe that it had the possibility to positively impact the students in our schools and would be better for the students and the staff that are engaged in intervention.
Thank you, Stephen. Before we move off of that, I would, I apologize, I'd like to introduce two very valuable team members that work in the Teaching and Learning Department. Ms. Tammy Jones, she's the Associate Director of Literacy Intervention, oversees our literacy intervention, and I know she has some guests. If we could have our guest out in Cyberland there. Interventionists, if you'll please turn on your cameras, we can see you. There's Brittany. Thank you, Brittany. And I know Ms. Jones has some testimonials, and then also, we have Ms. Emily Thomas. And she is our math teacher leader and oversees our math intervention in our, in our district. And so, there are wealth of knowledge as well as the interventionists that have joined us. So, if you have any additional questions, again, people closest to the work really can speak to the work more clearly.
Brian? Thank you. I kind of asked this question last time you were here, and I just wanted, if you could clarify a bit with me. As far as the information being able to be transferred within district to other teachers, so if you have a fifth grader that's going to school at King and then goes to Webster, how deep of records go within district? And then, to follow up, how deep of records go outside of district that you can share with other districts? Because we have such a turnover sometimes of students within the district going to other ones that, you know, looking particularly into interventions and how, you know, if the student moves in April, does it reset the clock in, in the communication there? And I guess, i- is that something that you're working on as far as within the CISA or within neighboring districts as well? Are we kind of leading by being the large district in the area and going that approach?
Guess I'm the lucky one, I guess, to do most of the talking tonight. So, I'll talk about within district, and, and I'm glad you brought that up, Brian, because that's been a concern of mine for a long time in Green Bay, and part of the reason why we actually pushed for T-SAR in the beginning is, like, we would have teachers tracking information about kids in their class, and we have eight to nine percent intra-district transfer. Now, that went down during the pandemic, because we didn't have as much movement, and I don't know what post-pandemic's gonna look like. But again, at one point in time, we were looking at eight to nine percent mobility rate in our district. And so, we needed that assessment information to follow the child in a way better than trying to photocopy a page out of somebody's notebook and send it over, and that's why we really pushed hard to get all that information into Infinite Campus, so that it could follow the student. So, on an in-district transfer, easy. I mean, all the Infinite Campus stuff goes in Panorama, that student's gonna move from one school to the other, so you're gonna see what intervention they were in. I mean, that's all very simple. From district to district, the practice has been and probably will be for a while, and this has a lot to do with student records and trying to figure out the best way to move things from one place to another. There is some information at the state level, such as that state student ID, state testing information. When that student moves from district to district, the new district has access to all of that information. There's a lot of information that still gets sent the old-fashioned way, which is via like a secure scan from Infinite Campus, where we just basically do a data dump on that kit, and we send it over when we get a records request. Not as familiar with that aspect, but I know a little bit about it. So, that will continue to be the case. And in that case, what we would have to do is we would have to do a PDF of that student's intervention plan from Panorama and send it over as part of that records request. Now, the dream would have been to have one statewide student information system. Then all this information could have gone back and forth, but that didn't happen for various reasons. Because a lot of districts wanted to maintain their autonomy with the ability to select their own student information system. And so, we have the system we have now, which is really like an advanced fact system, basically.
Okay, so this is a five-year contract. And we're using ESSR dollars for this, so this is not money that's coming from our operational budget.
Yep, it, that, it is, the, the reason I say that is because we had to use twenty percent of our dollars for educational and remediation programs. And so, instead of new projects and new money, where we're actually using ESSR money to replace what, what had been teaching and learning money. So, we're swapping funds to meet the quota of the twenty percent under the ESSR ESSR law for ESSR three.
So, if we weren't doing this with ESSR funds, this is money that would have come out of the operational budget. So, this is, and, and I mean, the operational budget is where salaries come from. So, this is actually freeing up operational dollars by bundling into a five-year contract and using those ESSR funds. I would like to hear from the interventionists who have been piloting the tool, just what their thoughts are, what kinds of efficiencies they're seeing with the tool.
I can go ahead and share. I'm Brittany Baronic. I am the math interventionist at Nicolay Elementary. I've been using Panorama for the last about two months, and I've been using it with all eight of my interventions. Things that I really like about Panorama, I like how the students are grouped together. That's something we've never been able to do with T-SAR, when I have a group of students versus individual interventions. And it groups them and it shows me the goal for the whole group for the intervention, which is really nice to see. Every time I go in, the goal is right at the top there, which we didn't have before. There's an opportunity to input weekly data. The progress monitoring for my tier-three students is already put into a graph when I log in, so that's been really nice to see. Otherwise, normally, the school psych would just hold on to that information and we couldn't see it really till the end of the intervention. I get to upload the anecdotal weekly notes, just like I did with T-SAR. But it's really nice to have it all in the same place. So, I don't have data in one place, and then my notes somewhere else, and then my goal in the third place. That's kind of been the biggest benefit, in my opinion, is that everything is in one spot. And then, when I do a summary at the end of an intervention, that's there as well. So, when an intervention is over, I can go back and see everything all at once. Each weekly data point, all of my notes, the goal, whether they met the goal or not, the graph. It's really been a time saver, in my opinion, and also better for me instructionally with that goal constantly being there at the top and then the weekly data points that I'm able to input now. So, I have really enjoyed using Panorama over T-SAR for all of interventions for the past couple of months.
The, this is a flat rate, this is not based off licensing? Correct? The rate doesn't change based off of the number of?
No, that does not. It's flat rate. It's locked in in what we have, and I included in the update the amount that we'd be saving every year. And in order to use ESSR three funds, we had to show a saving of multiple years of using the contract, or it wouldn't have been eligible for the ESSR three funds.
So, the plan is to have all the interventionists using the tool by the start of the twenty-two, twenty-three school year? No, that's okay. Will this go to, I think Nancy had asked this, is this something that classroom teachers will be using at some point?
Yes, they will be using it. We started with intervention. It's an intervention tool a- at the school level. In fact, I'd really like, the people closest to work, I'm, I'm going to fill it in, and Tammy and Emily, I'd like for you to speak to this. So, at each of our schools, we have a learning support teams, and those learning support teams discuss students that are being referred for intervention. Then, the building principals and the directors will all be trained as they facilitate those meetings. And then, of course, we have our classroom teachers who make the referral for the students for additional resources and additional help. And so, having our interventionists trained to this level, when they, they can either join and learn from our interventionists as part of that process for learning support teams, or there will be additional support for them, teachers to learn through and using the resource with our tech integrators, who also will be preparing support face-to-face support, as well as how to do videos that they can watch. Emily or Tammy, would you like to speak more of that?
It's a collaborative effort based on the teacher and the interventionists. They would come together and they talk about the students that they have concern with, either in literacy or in math. So, when the teacher creates a plan, and she brings forth her concerns, the intervention is in the meeting, the LST meeting with that teacher. So, they create a plan from the needs for the universal. Then, the lit- literacy interventions or math interventions will create a plan for intervention. So, it's both in one document, so that they're collaborating together. And anybody that wants to look at the plans that was created for that particular student, they can see that.
Yeah, I would, I would just add to what Tammy was saying, it's gonna give us a nice view of a student's path over time. And so, in our, in our multi-level systems of support, we want to see students getting that support over time. We have record of it, like she said, all in one spot. It's kind of like a timeline. So, now we can just see quickly the summary of So now we can just see quickly the summary of all the support that students have had, what's been successful, what hasn't been, and what, what areas have we focused on and targeted over time?
And I also have testimonials from the interventionists because I worked directly with them on a day to day basis. And so some of them could not be here tonight, but they did send in their emails with their, what they like about it. So if I can just read just one, one says this, as I begin to use Panorama, I'm finding many benefits. Having everything on one platform is very beneficial. It is simple to create an intervention plan and enter data. I like that it generates a graph of students' progress and sends out email reminders to update progress when needed. Thank you.
I just, I just wanted to add that there's, if you were to see the dashboard, it's, it's got the academics on there, math and literacy. It also will have the attendance on there and it will have, if there's any social emotional interventions that are going on, starting with universal. And then there's also mental health on there. So it's all one area. So you can truly, what they're saying, look at the entire child with one click and not, oh, here I got this in the PLP, which is the personal learning plan. Oh, I've got this in the counselor notes. Oh, I've got this in the, in TESAR. It will all be right there so that you can look at the entire child and discuss the entire child and not have to have multiple meetings with multiple staff members.
James?
Thank you. I asked a couple of questions last meeting and I just want to follow up. You're here because the way the contracts for restructure to be paid upfront crosses a threshold of $250,000 for us to approve that. But attached to that threshold is a transition from a process of select package selection, where you have a lot of latitude to define that process and a formal RFP process. And I was told, I think that these were renewals, therefore we didn't have to go to RFP. So I don't exactly know what the threshold does for the public. And I don't know when I look at this, because I trust all of your competence in package selection. I don't, I don't argue that this is the package or not to go with. Haven't spent enough time, spent a lot of career time doing it. But I don't know what the opportunity cost is. I don't know what other opportunities to spend S or 20% funds were evaluated and how we landed on spending this money here. Is there any background that can be provided?
Absolutely, Stephen. It's been about a half year, years are mixing. All of the other resources that we reviewed before the team selected Panorama in the difference between those other resources, such as the cell survey, so on and so forth.
Yeah, I mean, I think, but, and correct me if I'm wrong, James, but I think your questioner is around not just looking at other intervention systems, but any kind of like thing we could do with that 20% and we're doing this instead. So I'm actually going to refer that back. Because it's, it's broader than just looking at the different platforms. It's like, of all the things we could have done, we're doing this. Why is this the thing?
So, thank you. I'm sorry, I thought you were asking the comparison between the different platforms we reviewed before selecting this. But noting that we looked at, I met with Angie and her team and they provided us guidance in looking at the, actually, the platforms are the large ticket items that we have in the teaching and learning budget that would be eligible for this grant under these parameters and guidelines. And that was one piece that we wanted to make sure that we did, is that we would take the, the resources that we know we are going to be using over the next five, three to five years. And we looked at other resources and then the greatest amount that we could put into ESSER and have it be eligible that would really replace what we were spending the district money on. And so to be totally upfront, if we did go with the higher cost items for this and knowing that we are going to be placing that and using that in the district anyway, it was a bigger savings for the district to put our larger cost items. And it was, it's very explicitly clear when they outline in ESSER three and the use for the 20%, what those dollars needed be used for. So you're kind of boxed into what are we already doing? You know, what are we, what are we already having placed in the district? The vision of moving forward in the district, what can we use that meets this eligibility? But then still allows the district to save money beyond the years of the ESSER grant. Is that what you're asking?
So there are a lot of constraints on the, on the spend. And this is a safe, well-known problem that you're attacking. Okay, thank you.
All right, other, other questions? I guess I would like to ask, as we look at expanding this, and I, I understand the, where it does make sense to have mostly interventionists be trying this first. I guess my, my concern is I want to be really sure that we have strong evidence that this is going to translate well to, to teachers in the general classroom, because this is a very big ticket item to, if we were to start hearing complaints about it immediately next year and, you know, be told, why didn't you, you know? I, I understand why we tested, why we had interventions on here to do most of the testing, but can we get some reassurance that there's been communication with classroom teachers and that classroom teachers are ready for this too?
So we, I would say that's probably in our next phase of looking at how we'll use Panorama. Right now, we've been focused on what it's going to look like for our interventionists and our intervention plans. We have started talking preliminarily, preliminarily in our meetings about what that is going to look like for those plans that Tammy was talking about. So just in which part of the platform, we're going to put that in. And where does it make the most sense for teachers to be putting it in? And where does it make the most sense for people, you know, all those stakeholders that we're talking about that are part of this process to go and find that information? And so we're talking about that at this point. But when we talked about the 2223 school year being our full rollout, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that's for our interventionists be rolling out their plans in Panorama. And so I would, I would think in the future is when we'd start to look at, you know, having teachers pilot in the same way and giving some feedback in that way as well.
So is this, am I, isn't this being this big of a ticket item? Isn't this replacing certain things that we're trying to move away from? Like towards a phase replacement, but a complete replacement of some things are being done elsewhere, correct?
You're correct. We are no longer using the platform Edge Climber. And we have moved all of that, that we used to use Edge Climber for. It was minimally used. And what we did use it for will be included as part of our Panorama rollout.
Okay, so where was this? If Edge Climber was minimally used, then what was happening to the data that would have been put in Edge Climber? But Edge Climber wasn't being used and Panorama wasn't here yet.
So that all of that data gets pushed from IC. And Stephen, feel free to jump in here. So that the, all of the data that we had in Edge Climber, we own that data in our Infinite Campus system. So we have that data. I believe that's what you're asking. And so all of that data is being pushed into Panorama and is in Panorama right now. Go ahead. And it's hard to explain because where the teachers come in is when we, when we start building personalized learning plans, the teacher makes the referral is where the teacher comes into the process. And it's so, it's an implementation. It's kind of like a best looked at as learning by doing. So instead of having everyone come down and we give them, and there are, it's an hour training. Instead of having everyone come down to district office and have an hour overview on how to use Panorama, it's actual connection to their work that they're doing, like as part of their job. And by doing their work, they're learning how to use the system. And it's not a very complex system. So the rollout will be very meaningful to the classroom teacher who's in the same meeting with the principal, who's in the same meeting with the interventionist. So it's a, it's a piece of the work that you're doing, not something being done to you. I, I see them, I anticipate teachers taking off with this and wanting more and more. I know the principals already do. We're awarding them, we're kind of holding them off until we can get the interventionists really solid in this so that we have multiple places of support within the schools. And so we're building capacity as well as using the tool by doing it.
I just also want to add, you asked where has this data been stored? It's been stored in multiple places and that's what's been difficult. Because some of it is in the counselor tab, some of it's in the PLP, some of it you have to go through. If it's a behavioral referral, you're looking through all the incident referrals to see suspensions and patterns of behaviors. Teachers had them in notebooks. They had them, I mean, they had them everywhere, which is why we want them in one spot. So it's easy and everybody knows where to look. And I know some people were better at using the PLPs than the others. So it, it became very inefficient, I guess you would say. And I think this is what that's going to do. And we do have, we're going to be next rolling it out to the directors of the schools, because they're the closest to the work in the schools. And Tammy and her team will, will be doing it when they're doing their LST meetings. Teachers have to know where this data is, right? And principals will have the opportunity to have the dashboard show up on their, on their computer every morning when they turn on their computer. So we have to get them knowledge at least about the product, the product and what they're looking at. And so that will happen this year. We want it to be rolled out meaningfully. We did some training when we said it was supposed to be for interventionists. And there were individuals on that training that were not doing interventions with any children, right? So they're telling us how it didn't, you know, I would have preferred it to be in person. And it wasn't geared for them. It was geared for interventionists. So we need, then we need to make sure we're gearing all of the professional learning to the targeted audience. So what the principals need to know is not what the interventionist needs to know, which is not what the teachers need to know. So we're being very purposeful in how we roll that out and manageable so that it's rolled out in a fashion that is, that the teachers do see the value of it.
I, I guess I'm still, I don't, I guess I, I don't think I have any more specific question here, but I guess what, what I still don't entirely have my head wrapped around here is it sounds like, it sounds like this is a massive game changing, big ticket replacement for multiple existing systems to streamline it into one, right? And at the same time, but it's, it's just interventionists who are doing it right now. And then it sounds like maybe teachers who are in, in the parts of what they do that's working closely with interventionists that are like, will it, what will be gone if this is a big success? What won't exist in three years that's here today? IC, a part of IC, like what does it replace?
Yeah, so eventually we would look to phase out our use of the Infinite Campus PLP and RTI tabs. We would look to phase out our use of TESAR to capture intervention information. At this time, there are no plans for TESAR to go away completely. Again, TESAR was built to be an assessment capturing tool, not necessarily an intervention capturing tool. So we've made it work, but again, it's not ideal. And as, as people have attested to, having information in multiple systems is not a great thing. Nancy also mentioned Edge Climber. I believe that contract is lapsing at the end of this year because Panorama does also include some data display pieces that would replace what we were currently using Edge Climber for. So the immediate impact that I would see, starting next year is we would no longer be using TESAR to capture intervention information. We would no longer be using the Infinite Campus RTI tab. Not sure about the PLP timeline quite yet. And then Edge Climber contract would lapse at the end of this year. So we would no longer be using that tool.
Okay, thank you. Brian? And just to follow up from what I asked last week, or our last meeting as well. With NICO, as far as accommodations for students that receive services with their IP, on state assessments and during classroom assessments, those, those options are also available for like masking answers, text to speech, things like that as well. Sorry, Steve. Following, you know, the accommodations that would be listed for the port exam as kind of the basis for it.
We would look to include everything that you would include in an IEP. And the nice thing about, so we're switching gears. I hope that's okay. Yeah, well, that's all right. NICO's up. This is great. So by the way, NICO means teacher, if you're curious about what, what it meant. So that's one thing I really like about that tool is that it's about the teacher and not necessarily just about the assessment with the NICO company. But be that as it may, it functions within a Chrome web browser. So every accessibility option that you would have available in that Chrome web browser is also available on the tests that you would take in NICO. And we have not encountered an accommodation request yet that we couldn't find a way to meet when we were giving an assessment in NICO.
Anything else? Okay, thank you very much. And then we will continue on. We'll continue on to assessment task force.
As you can see, the three of us spend a lot of time together.
Thank you very much for this opportunity. As I stated in the memo, I believe it was Valentine's Day that the board asked us to convene a review of the district's current assessment calendar. And so we did pull together a task force and members to begin that work. And your ask of us was to reduce the current number of assessments by approximately 25%. And then to come back to you with recommendations from that task force by August 9th. And so in doing so, I felt it was important that we bring this during the process. We have just really begun the sessions. We've had one large session and one, we call them small groups. The meetings are set up and this, in the platform that we're using would be a pre K12 large group. And then more specific to grade level work come in the, what we call a small group, PK eight. However, the high school are really enjoying this, so they're coming even though they don't have to come to this. So it's been one, the positive pieces is the first time in the district we've sat down and looked at assessment in the continuum of learning from pre K to 12. And the dialogue in the small groups are really beneficial and really built in professional learning for everyone to speak about the different types of assessment and learning that happens at different stages in a student's educational experience. One way and one ask of you is to get as many voices as we possibly could. And there's no better way to get voice than that good old survey methodology. And so we had a survey written. We, we actually distributed 2001 of the surveys and a fantastic return. We had 1,268 stakeholders that returned, returned the survey. We used the survey for a couple of pieces. And the power of this survey is we don't have to, there's no perception to it. Either the teachers, the way it's written, the teachers do it, or they don't do it. They just, yep, this is what they do, or this isn't what they do. If this is how they use it, or it isn't how they use it. So that the constituents who are the representatives as members of the working task force always have access to what their colleagues in that grade level have reported out during that survey. And so it's. And so it's just another tool for the task force members to make a decision around as they bring forward those recommendations. So a little bit about that, and by the way, that's a sixty three percent return. That's phenomenal. It's also the way that we captured who wanted to be a part of the internal working task force. And then we looked as a team to balance that. So we had representatives from, a majority was asked. For classroom teachers and then representatives across the district pre K twelve and then from various different. Services and teachers that provide services and use the data throughout the district. Any questions so far on? Then I can keep going, but if you have any direct questions that you'd like me to address, I certainly can. So the task force membership, just to make sure that we are within your guidelines. Vicki invited us to the G B A weekly meeting and they provided oversight or in, input. To what the membership was, they. Really confirmed that there was a nice balance of membership there. And then the, I had a little, I have explained the, I hope, the structure. There will be four large group sessions and now we're only down to two small group sessions. We did postpone or cancel one of those sessions. There was a conflict with the G B A. End of year retirement celebrations and so trying to rearrange these schedules for multiple people, thirty some people. Almost impossible at this time of the year. And so we decided that we would just postpone that and then there will be work for those small groups to do. In between the two week break. And then basically our first step in any task force is really to establish those norms and make sure we're all grounded in the same purpose. Why we're there and the purpose that we're there is to. First determine what our stakeholders' needs are around the assessments for the funding, for the reporting, for. Do all our stakeholders need and then to go back and say, what are the least number of assessments that we can give? To meet all of those needs. And you're all aware that state assessments and so on and so forth, we, those are told and, and determined by the Department of Public. Construction as well as the other, the other side of the spectrum of the three big buckets of assessments and that. Those are the formative assessments which are really determined by the teachers. Those that are, that, those that are instructing students, that is that type of an assessment to inform their instruction. That is. We, we mentioned them and we had the teachers go through an activity and they listed all of them. Only to come to realize that, wow, there's a lot, but not everyone uses the same ones. No, it's, it's really up to the teacher. To use that type of formative assessment to give them the information they need to inform student learning. So what we're really working on is what we call those interim assessments. And when we came to the board, we, that's our curriculum. Map, the windows, yep, that were students are where teachers have to give assessments three times a year within a period of time. That seems to be where the, the most, the body of this work is really going to evolve too. And that will really come, actually the twelfth, this Thursday, is where we really start working into those interim assessments. And I'm most certain from the results of the survey and the conversations we've had with our. Team members that, task team members, task force team members, that, that is the sweet spot that they really, we really need to dig into. And look at what do we actually need? What are the fewest number of assessments that we can use to meet all those stakeholders' needs? So the task force, I'm going to move on to the next steps and okay, unless anybody has any questions. The next steps, what we'll be doing is the task force is going to work through this process. And actually it's right in the middle of June, we would. We're, we're confident that they're going to come up with recommendations and when the task force brings forward those recommendations. Then we're going to capture those recommendations. We're going to format them into when we'll make another, Dr. Stramp will make another survey with those recommendations. And we will push that recommendation out to all the stakeholders again, so that they, they see what recommendations that their colleagues. Brought forward as a recommendation to reduce the number of assessments used in the district. Then, but once we get that data back, that will be part of our final report that we submit. And like all good democracies, the, the vote that gets the, the. The recommendation that receives the greatest number of votes will be those that the task force members then. Will push forward as the recommendation for you to take action on.
All right, questions? I guess I'll, I'll start with one. What? So what happens if? And I, I like, I like what I'm hearing about the. You know, the role of this committee and the task force and the task force's ability to take a stand. What happens if a majority of? If a majority of the committee wants to make changes. That the administrative perspective feels that we can't maybe do all of those changes or should do some different ones. But what, what, how does, how would that look? How would that be present?
That's what I believe the power that, that's an excellent question. That's the power of the task force is we work together collaboratively. We build a common understanding and a depth of understanding what the district needs as an assessment system, not what perhaps, perhaps what. Administrators typically represent what the needs of the district would be because of different commitment, legal commitments and so on and so forth. That, they, they may not be in the, what we all agree upon on. You know, any of the task force members are a hundred percent into the, this was, it's a give and take. It's a really strategically working through, how can we have the fewest number of assessments? But yet meet all of this stakeholders' needs in the district such as our legal obligation or grants or so forth and our reports. And do the teachers need? What do the teachers need in order to know that their students are making progress from the beginning of the year to the middle of the year? Adjustments made with all the other assessments and teaching they do and then of course the summit to have at the end of the year. So it's a really, we're looking at the, I would say the progress monitoring heart of an, of an assessment system. So to your point, Andrew, there is no one person that will have a voice. This is done by committee, it's voted on by committee. And we will work through it as a committee.
Again, if, if this is. If this is a direction where this, this committee or this, this work. This work session has the authority to determine what's going to go for, to the board about what assessments are being kept or not. Even if. If, if the. Administration is delegating that to the committee in such a way that if the committee, which is majority teacher. Prefers a slightly different direction than what senior administration may have preferred and we're going to go with the. Committee anyways, that is. Impressive. Of course, we would still, I, I think. We would still need to hear from you, obviously, if the committee report did a majority, unlikely though it is, right? A committee could have a majority report that overlooks some detail that could cost us to lose funding, but. I am happy to hear that. The only other question I had was there, there's a reference to reducing, reducing by. Twenty five percent, where did that come from?
That actually came from the board.
A motion on the fourteenth? Okay, I was looking for it and I didn't, I didn't find it, but.
It's very specifically mentioned in the motion.
Okay, well, at least twenty, I'm assuming it was at least twenty five probably because otherwise. That's, otherwise it would be pretty. Okay, all right, thank you. I have no further, Laura?
Um, as you make your way through this process. Will there be discussion or maybe there already has been discussion on how to improve the assessments that we, that we want to keep? Like how, like efficiencies or saving time for teachers or, I don't know. I'm imagining that that kind of will come up as well.
You're absolutely correct and I believe we're entering that part of the process starting in large session two. As we go through the process, you, you, they will weed out, they will work through, is it the assessment? Or is it the, the demands on administering the assessment and monitoring the assessment? That will all be brought through as part of, so we begin with the assessments we currently have. And I believe in the motion, you also asked or in a follow up conversation. It was provided for me to me that you also asked of us to report out. On the process we are going to use to accomplish just that. And so what process are we actually going to be using to make sure that we address the assessments that we have? And again, I'm going to go to our interim assessments because that, that's your assessment calendar for the most part that we had the discrepancies in. Or the, the. I guess that's where the heat is right now, the pushback. And so we want to address that, right? And so. We, not only is it the assessment that we're addressing, it would, it would be all the other elements of why that assessment would be. And that's the beautiful part is there are five questions we always ask ourselves. Money was one. The connection to the Board of Education's strategic plan, the federal grants that are, that are out there, the community and stakeholders. These are all questions that your task force members have to filter through when they're working through which stay on and which come off. So there's, we keep, what, what we really do is facilitate and give them more tools. So they have the survey as a tool. They have actually, we call the filter that they go through because that's what you, that's what we do in system work. We have to make sure that we take in consideration the cost, what the board's direction for the district is, what the state and federal laws are. You know, the, the impact that that assessment's going to have on other components of the district. So in other content areas and other components of the district, they're really taking a broad look at. What the assessments use for. The cost of what that assessment might be, the time element that will really get into the, want to say the weeds with that in our large group session two. If we would have had a small group session two, that's really where it starts to come together in task force work, but we're pretty excited. This is just a wonderful group of educators. To be working with, fantastic attitude. They, they want what's best and they want what's best for our children and it's always easy to circle around that wagon. So pretty exciting.
I, I just, we have a task force, we're not going to do this every single year, so now that we have this task force and. I, I agree, I thought the list of people on it, very impressive. You know, we have a mission, but. That looking at it in a more expansive way seems like now's the time to do that. So I just wanted to. Mention about, about the ones we're going to keep, how can we make them better?
Yeah, and absolutely Laura, it's a fantastic question and that is absolutely part of the depth that you go in a task force. Again, those closest to the work, the end user, it needs to be user friendly for the end user, yet meaningful, meet all stakeholders' needs.
Thank you.
Anything else on that? All right, then we'll move ahead to the G B A P S online P K six overview.
Mr. Becker, I hate to do this, but I also want to recognize Mr. Miller. This is probably his last board meeting with the district. He's taken on a principal position outside of G B A P S, but. He's led our assessment work for as long as I've known him and done a really outstanding job with it. So. Wanted to recognize you, Stephen. I want to turn it over. Thank you, Mr. Becker. I want to turn it over to Adam and Andrea. As you know, they came to a recent board meeting to talk about naming process for our online elementary school. And Adam wants to talk about that and roll out his plan to do so.
Okay, Vicki. And we kind of met with Laura and she said, you know, could we give the kind of board an overview of the online school as a whole? So this is just kind of a brief overview, but then also talking a little bit about our next steps for the naming process. So you, I believe you have a presentation that is linked in the agenda that I will go through, but really it all kind of started with, with. A philosophy or an idea. We all kind of do virtual learning as pandemic learning. And that worked for some students, but we wanted to really create a sustainable online school. That met the needs of students. So we, we kind of use this philosophy and it's to put students at the center of the learning and create a variety of learning experiences. Utilizing technology. To help meet and help students meet and exceed grade level expectations. Throughout the presentation, you will notice different ways that we have utilized technology. These are all student pictures or student work as well. Moving on to, so one of the things that overall is. If you look, there's not a whole lot of elementary. Online schools. But we felt like we had some things that we felt were really important to guide our decision making. One thing that we felt was that we had strong student family and school partnerships to create a collaborative learning experience. So things that we did with that is all of our students and families participated in a orientation meeting with me or one of my administrative teams. Just so they, they had an understanding of our program and we were able to get to know them better. And during that time, we also talked about something called the learning coach and that is the adult that is at home that supports the child's learning during. The school day because we felt that was extremely crucial. Within that partnership also, we knew that as this being a new program, we needed family feedback. So we were constantly working with families to get feedback, sometimes through surveys, but sometimes literally right there on the spot. And then the other big thing was looking at COVID and how it was done, we realized that that structure probably was not going to work for a sustainable online school. So what we did is we kind of created an innovative personalized schedule to obtain the universal curriculum and differentiated instruction to meet individual needs. So each of our students has an individualized structure based on their needs. They utilize Google Calendar where they come in throughout the day and, and kind of participate in a variety of different activities that are. On the next slide. Where we essentially have three different modes of education. We have synchronous when the students are together. That could be community circle, number corner, small group instruction, individual, conferring, social learning. Student talking, interaction, interactive read alouds and interactive writing. I will let you know in our synchronous time, majority of that would be done in small groups of two to three, maybe four students. Large group only for the most part happens during community circle and number corner. Part of that reason is we realized that. The smaller the group, the increased the amount of engagement and participation by students. So we want to increase that amount of time. Then we also have asynchronous work and that is work that, that our students are doing, not specifically with the teacher involved. But it is stuff that they're still able to do on, on the computer. You know, the last thing we did feel like there was a strong component of, we wanted our students to not always be in front of the computer. We started with a principal like three hours a day of, of odd computer time. I would say that I, as I said, all families, that is a goal. I don't know as we continue to explore that, we don't know how close we are, but to that. But we do believe that there is enough activities that we need to be sending home that can also be done off the computer. This next slide. Kind of, I think in, in a, in one slide or one picture kind of visualized the. I'm just kind of, kind of encompasses what we are able to do. Two of my teachers or my group of teachers came and said, hey, we think this would be a really good idea would be to put up a map of, of the United States and kind of push. Put pins on of where our students are currently being taught. And then I said, well, why don't we do it virtually? So right now on this slide, we may not have one in every, all, they may not be there currently always, but these are different spots that we have taught. Students in throughout the United States and in Mexico as well and Jamaica. So at any given time, we can be teaching students throughout, throughout the entire United States. Which has also allowed us to really build those relationships, but have a continuous model of learning, no matter what's going on in our families' lives. So our next steps, as as we continue to move forward and we're finishing up this first year is we want to, as we talked about at our last board meeting, marketing and branding, naming process, we really need to get, we want to get our name out there. We think we're offering this exceptional innovative schooling, and we want to make sure people are aware of it. But also know, you know, we have a name and a brand that goes with that. We want to, we will be expanding to sixth grade. So next year we will take on a sixth grade. So our students at fifth grade will roll into sixth grade. We we believe that it's important to offer that same level of education and support, and we're seeing a lot of success with it. And then we're going to continue to develop programming and experiences to meet the needs and the academic and social needs of all of our students. Moving into their naming process timeline. Last week I met with Laura and James and we sent out some communication to families and community members to see who would like to be on the naming committee. I met with some teachers to solicit that, and then we also be working with some fifth grade students to join our committee. Between now and the twenty seventh, our goal is to have two committee meetings where we are able to work through that committee process of exploring names. And then coming up with three that we're able to recommend to the board for on June thirteenth for discussion and public comment. And then hopefully having a final recommendation where the board would vote on June twenty seven. Wondering at this time if you have any questions?
Adam, in regards to the slide where the students are learning, are those students that are enrolled from that area or are they Green Bay students who may be visiting and or you know grandma and grandpa's in Minnesota? Are they full-time learning in those locations?
So those are all Green Bay resident students or Wisconsin resident students through open enrollment. Really, by doing this job, it opened up to to see a whole different varieties. We have some families that mom is a traveling nurse. So that student is there for a period of time. We have families that travel back to Mexico for periods of time. We have families that are during the pandemic, we're we're in Jamaica because that was a good place for them to be. So they, all of them have to have residency in Wisconsin as part of, because we are Wisconsin Public School. But they could be there from a short period of time to to a month.
Right, other, Dawn?
So you're expanding up to sixth grade next year? Are you looking at expanding enrollment outside of adding sixth grade?
I mean, I think the, we, as we continue to grow and build the program, we want to make sure that we're offering programming that meets the needs of students. So if we are continuing to build that programming and it's going to be as successful as what I, we all think it can be. I think that is definitely something that will be explored as we continue to move because we definitely want to continue to provide that programming for those students that are seeing that success and not only provide it but build upon it.
Awesome.
So yes, I did go and visit the school last week, which was very interesting, a real pleasure. And it was really good to see the facilities that have been built out in order to accommodate this new school. I I saw a couple of things that really stuck with me. One was that Adam mentioned to me that I got to go into the these rooms as teachers were teaching. And these, he said that this work attracts veteran teachers. Which I thought was a really interesting phenomenon. You sort of explained that that to me. But these are, these are teachers with a lot of years in. And they are adept and comfortable in this in this kind of setting. I found that really interesting. And then the other thing was that you mentioned, Adam, that that some of these children have made two year, two years of academic growth in this in this school year. That's that's profound, and I I was really impressed with that. It's not every student, but there, but it it has happened with some of the students from the schools. So those stuck with me and I just wanted to share them. And also thank you very much for giving me a tour.
Yeah, absolutely. We have seen the final numbers are still, we're still waiting to, but we have seen a lot of of some tremendous growth with our students. And I think it is the model where students are really getting individualized learning experiences to to push them. It's fifty percent of my first grade class has made two years worth of growth. Seventy-five have made a year and a half or more. So and and really the success of this school is due to the teachers. They have done an amazing job taking an idea and a philosophy and building it and growing it and taking feedback and adapting. And and just being flexible. So you know, they've gotten to essentially work to create a school that they feel could really meet the needs of all students.
Brian? Adam, I tried to find this online. I'm looking at your screen with the cameras over there, sorry. What percentage of students are open enrolled compared to Green Bay students?
I would have to get back to you on that to give you an exact number. But I would say well over a majority are Green Bay students. I would say maybe ten to fifteen are open enroll. But now I know that is, we are going through that process again, and we are continuing to reevaluate. And and people are applying. I think a big part of our branding, our next steps of our name is very important to get our name out there. Because we want to make sure people understand what we're offering, because it is a very different experience than other online schools.
I would agree. I was impressed like Laura with what I saw. And it's, it was very different than what I expected, actually. And to the question of expanding, one thing that I walked away from was it is bound to some common understanding of classroom size. And their their goal is not to expand and have one teacher teach two hundred, three hundred people. And you know, minimize the amount of contacts and rely on coaches, but really just create a classroom without walls. But you know, keep maintain those ratios that respect the those norms. But also the branding process is really compressed on schedule. As Adam said, it's necessary because I was inquisitive and curious as to what the niche was. And providing this school to current homeschooling families, it's very different to be a coach versus the primary educator of for homeschooled individuals. And this just jumped off the page as a very viable alternative to those Green Bay families. But if you say online school, I don't think you're going to get them there, right? So you really have to make sure that this branding speaks to that demographic. So I recognize the committee process and the policy that drives the committee process. But whatever we can do to make sure that we get this right. I I would encourage us to do whether it is engaging a outside consultant for a period of time or whatever, to make sure that we do a thorough job.
Brian? And I don't know if this question would be for Vicky or for Adam on this. Is this something that we could also eventually package and offer to other districts in the areas serving servicing the needs of their students through open enrollment, but have a formal partnership with them? Know their districts in the areas kind of work with other online schools and partnerships with them as far as providing some services to them? Is that something that is in the plans or something that you would see as a feasible option?
We haven't discussed that at this point, Brian. I think what Adam has created is something that certainly is a selling point for students in other districts. We haven't talked about partnering with other districts. Maybe we can look into that next year a little bit, but my hope is that families that are struggling in in the area might want to come to Green Bay. Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Anything else? Okay, and that was the final item on the education work session.
Thank you, Andrew. We are now going to move on to item five, policy and governance. We have a whole bunch of policies. Before we start, I just want to say thank you, Melissa, for making this chart, this handy dandy chart. Very helpful to see, see it all in one document with a small little synopsis of of what the summary element of of each one of these proposed rules. Policies. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to be facilitated by Laura Leighton one.
Thank you. We will just go through each of these and then I'll I'll state the the policy and the number and the title, and then I'll turn it over to Melissa. So the first one is policy four twenty-five, part-time public school, open enrollment.
And just for a little introduction, just to give James and Brian a little bit of background as to how we got here and why we're going in this format and in this in this way. So when I came in twenty thirteen to the district, the district had subscribed to the model policies from the Wisconsin Association of School Boards. There's a number of different services school districts can subscribe to for model policies. You get the policies, you get the updates, they give you legislative updates that impact the policies. And then you get to change them to adapt them to your district. When I came in twenty thirteen, the district had subscribed to WSB's policies, but they were a letter series. So things were like A, A, B, A, and those, they were various different chapters based on the alphabet. The district was in the process of working with WSB to update and convert those letter policies to the number series that you see today on board docs. They hadn't gotten all the way through, but that work had begun and it was taking a long time. Preferably, school districts would have in place a policy review rotation so that you're reviewing policies every two to five years. Green Bay didn't have that when I came in twenty thirteen. And because we were still updating and getting through all of that work, we weren't able to implement a review cycle. When we moved to the committee structure, that was really the opportune time for us to try again to get that review cycle in place. So we started that this year. We have, we we've been very adventurous and how many policy series we've gotten done this year. We have gotten through the six hundred series, which is the fiscal policies, the nine hundred series that deal with a lot of the facilities work. There's not a lot in the nine hundred series. Then we started on the five hundred series, which is the human resources policies. And there was a lot of work to be done in that section. And now tonight we have the seven hundred series, which is the support services. So now that we have the series of policies that really needed the most work, starting with twenty-two, twenty-three, we're going to start on our rotation. So for twenty-two, twenty-three, we're going to do one hundreds and two hundreds. I think about four or five years ago, Andrew was here when this occurred, we reviewed the one hundred and two hundred series. So those won't be as hopefully as much work as the policies that we've had to do this year. Now that we're getting on a cycle, I'm I'm hopeful, other than the legislative changes, that we will be seeing these policies more frequently. Brian?
Just so logistics question, the the most efficient way to look at this would be the series review considerations sheet. Your phone didn't get that. Am I correct on that, Melissa, that the seven hundred series, the series review consideration is going to be the most?
Yes, we'll walk through, we'll go through the table and I'll introduce the policies. And then if you have reviewed them or have any questions, we'll just take them one by one. Okay? And the other thing to point out too, policies have a policy and an administrative rule. The policy is really the board's work. That's the governance document. That's your, the the way that the board lets its stakeholders know your view on that particular topic. A rule is the administrative implementation of the rule. We're not required to bring changes to the rule to the board. When we do whole scale changes to the rule and the accompanying policy, we do typically bring it so that you understand what the changes will be with respect to the administrative rule. So because we did the seven hundred series, we have brought all of those rules forward where there's going to be minor changes. But if those were just one-off changes that needed to happen, we wouldn't be required to bring those to the board. Beth, can you remind the board where they can get that table?
Yep, it's uploaded under every line item of the seven hundred series. It's called series review considerations. It's the same document, just a hundred times. Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, but before we get into the seven hundreds, the first one on our agenda is part-time public school, open enrollment. If you've been playing along with the legislature over the last ten years, they have gone back and forth, back and forth, back and forth with respect to the various different structures for open enrollment. Part-time open enrollment got morphed into a number of different things. We are back to part-time open enrollment. So this policy you'll see on the updated list where we track the dates of how often we change things. This one's been updated a number of times. So when we updated this with the last legislative change, it looked a little bit different here in the district as to what personnel were responsible for various different tasks. As we've worked through this process and this procedure, we, I think we've now gotten into a good groove. So the changes really just reflect who is doing the work with respect to the part-time open enrollment policy. Any questions on that one?
Okay, now we'll move on to seven twenty procedures for student security. And as was pointed out, within that, you'll see the seven hundred series review considerations.
So in your chart, you have the policy number or the rule number, the title, the last time that policy rule was revised. So you can see the date. And then whether we are proposing that there be revisions or or we're adopting a new policy. And then the summary of either what that new policy is or a summary of the revisions. So with respect to rule seven twenty, we are proposing a change, slight changes to this rule to reflect the frequency of the Alice drills that are required by state law. And Alice drills are drills that in twenty eighteen, if you remember, that was when the mass shooting in Florida occurred and a number of different legislative changes happened in Wisconsin that required a number of policies to be drafted or revised. This was one of them, and this change just reflects the frequency of those Alice drills. Any questions on this one?
Okay, we'll move on to seven twenty point one, building grounds and equipment security.
This is a new policy we're proposing. What's great about the WSB model policies is they give you a menu of all the policies that could possibly exist in a series, and then you choose the ones that apply to your district. So we've had an opportunity in this cycle of review to look through the policies that we think we should have on the books to provide transparency to the taxpayers as well as provide information that the board would want the stakeholders to know. So this is one of those buildings, grounds and equipment security. The security of our buildings is a critical component to our safety program. And this policy addresses the governance components of the security of the district's buildings, grounds and equipment. Any questions on this one? Okay.
Next, seven twenty point two, identification badges. This is another new policy.
So some of our policies policies had referred, in the safety program policies, had referred to the wearing of safety badges, but didn't provide explicit details as to how you get those badges, who's required to wear them, when you're required to wear them, those sorts of things, replacement. So we have drafted a policy that provides the importance of wearing those safety badge, those, I'm sorry, identification badges. And then it addresses those governance components of wearing those for students, staff, visitors and vendors. And when they're required to be worn during the regular school day.
James?
A quick question that's generalized and I won't have to ask it again. In reading the policies, none of them really address codifying or In reading the policies, none of them really address codifying or recording or records retention. So this one says visitors need to check in and register. Does the policy say that those records will be kept for a period of time? Do you relegate all of that to procedures? Or is there any policy statement around that?
That's a very good question. We do have a policy, and I cannot remember the number off the top of my head. I want to say three forty-seven. But we adopted the, in policy, the board has adopted the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction records retention requirements. And I can get you that chart, but in the DPI's record retention guidelines, it explicitly details, I'd say, two hundred different records that a school district has, and then what the retention schedule is. And if it's not itemized in that retention schedule, then the default is seven years per Wisconsin record retention requirements.
Is it reasonable to, um, to think that if there is no speak of any kind of record retention, it's either covered by that one policy or you've adopted that new records need to be kept? So Alice training was the seven twenty, you have to train twice a year or whatever, but there's no mention of recording the training or who was absent or whatever is either in that policy. I can find the record and retention, or there's no, no requirement.
So the great thing is the Wisconsin Legislature creates all these statutes that have all different requirements. So with respect to Alice, there's a specific process for recording those trainings, and then that comes to the board. I don't, I don't think it came at your last meeting. It comes to the board for your approval. You review every single one of those drills, and then you have to approve that. And then Chris Coller, the Safety and Security Coordinator, forwards that onto the state. So there's a very specific record retention requirement for that. And there are for other things in the district, and then it's our job to make sure we're on top of those and recording those records in, in response to the statutory requirements.
Any other questions? Okay, we'll move on to seven twenty-one, building and grounds, management, maintenance and inspection.
This is another new policy. Mike was here tonight to talk about what that looks like from an implementation standpoint. And this policy really just codifies what we've already been doing in the district, but provides those governance processes and procedures to that work that we do here in the district.
Any questions? Okay, we'll move it on to seven twenty-two-one, reporting visitor accidents or injuries on district premises.
The district currently has policy seventy-seven twenty-two in place that applies to students and staff with reporting accidents and injuries. We did not have a policy that addressed how that looked for visitors. Of course, it gets done, but we didn't have a policy in place. So this policy just sets forth that process as well, as well as the governance components around reporting of those accidents and injuries to visitors.
James?
Is there in the policy, the definition of substantial? Because I think we are to report or hear about substantial injuries? Or is it just? At the moment in time, consideration for what do you think needs to be reported to the board?
I will look in the other policies. That's a really good point about having a definition in the policy with respect to substantial injuries. So I, we can add that.
Thank you. Okay, seven twenty-three, school safety plans.
This policy was changed to update the change in the Wisconsin Assessment Threat Protocol, which came out just to update different, um, requirements set forth in that threat protocol. That's all dictated by the state as to what needs to be in your threat protocol. And then we've also revised the policy to note that school safety plans are provided electronically. Another upside to COVID was that many of these documents were placed on our intranet and other ways for staff to be able to access them, and you're not physically in a classroom. And so now everything is electronically with respect to those school safety plans.
Any questions? Okay, we'll move it on to seven twenty-three-four, crisis management.
A number of years ago, the district officially adopted the NIMS crisis management system in order to manage various different crises in the district. This policy provides the governance components to crisis management and also sets forth the process and the procedures that the district will use when managing a crisis.
Any questions? Okay, moving on to seven twenty-four, indoor environmental quality management.
State law requires school districts to have and implement an indoor environmental quality management plan. This policy addresses those requirements and sets forth the management of indoor environmental quality. And to James, to your question before, there's also various different record retention requirements under this law as well. So we follow those statutory requirements.
Thank you. Any questions? Um, next, seven twenty-five, asbestos management.
Similar to the indoor environmental quality management, we also have to have an asbestos management plan on file and follow that through the state and retain various different records. This policy codifies that as well.
Questions? Okay, seven twenty-six, chemical hygiene plan, hygiene management.
If you were here a number of years ago, we had a mercury leak in the district. So not only did we get to implement our crisis management, but we also got to implement our chemical hygiene plan. We have had a chemical hygiene plan on the books, but it also, going through that process, opened our eyes and ears as to various different chemicals that had been staying in science rooms and working with our chemical hygiene officers in our various different secondary schools to get those out of our, our schools. So this policy, just similar to the previous two, codifies those statutory requirements and sets forth what we are legally obligated to do with respect to chemical hygiene maintenance.
Questions? Okay, seven thirty-one, privacy in locker rooms, restrooms and designated changing areas.
So if you've been following along on how these policies are structured, as we have done the revisions, we also wanted to make sure that we have a standard formatting in the policies so that they flow and that everyone can know where to expect the definitions, the implementation, those sorts of things when you go to read them. This policy was brought into that standard formatting. But in addition to that, we also clarified that privacy doesn't just apply to locker rooms, it applies to restrooms and other designated changing areas so that students also understand that they have those rights when they are not in a traditional locker room.
Any questions? Seven thirty-two, use of unmanned aircraft, drones.
I think this is my favorite one in the seven hundred series. I wrote a policy about a drone. There are federal and state rules regarding the flying of drones, and Mike's Facilities Department uses drones when we are doing our referendum projects and when we're doing various different buildings and grounds work, and our students are using drones as well in, in their classrooms. So in order to make sure that we're not violating federal airspace requirements or other state laws, this policy sets forth what those processes and procedures are.
Brian?
You're excited to write the policy, and I have a question about it. The WIA requires, bans the use of drones during sporting events. So if there's other policy by groups that we partner with, for instance, if there's a football game, the officials are required to stop the game until the drone disappears, does that go to, does the board policy go to the most restrictive part of it? In other words, are officials allowed to still stop that and not have some coach say, well, policy seven thirty-two allows me to have this because it's an educational purpose?
So I believe in here, we did adopt the WIA's restrictions. Let me just go back and look. Okay, but I, I'm almost positive we adopted WIA's, and it's really for safety, as well as in various different rules around broadcasting student sports and, and activities.
Thank you. Seven thirty-three, energy management.
This policy was last revised in 2006, so we revised it to bring in alignment with our standard policy formatting as well as to update it for legal requirements.
Any questions? All right, seven fifty-one, student transportation services.
I think we forgot seven thirty-three rule. So again, that was same with the policy, to revise that rule to bring it in alignment with the formatting and update legal requirements.
Okay, the next one, student transportation services.
I want to thank Chad for working on all of these because these were a lot of work. It looks like a substantial changes to the transportation policies, largely revised to bring into standard formatting as well as to just really update to reflect our current practices and procedures. So that's what you'll see with respect to policy seven fifty-one.
And then anything different with the rule for seven fifty-one?
Same changes, same reason for the changes.
Any questions? Okay, seven fifty-one bus safe, seven fifty-one point one, bus safety program.
The purpose of this policy is to address our safety program and the governance components of that program and make sure that our contractors are aware of what the requirements are as well as our parents and students.
Any questions? Okay. Seven fifty-one point two, use of electronic surveillance technology on school bus.
This policy was last revised in 2015, and it has been revised to bring in alignment with our policy formatting as well as update legal requirements.
Any questions? Okay, seven fifty-one point four, transportation contractors.
This is a new policy that we are bringing forward to reflect the contract requirements for, for our transportation carriers as well as what the district's obligations are, and then how concerns regarding those transportation contractors would come forward for a governance point of view.
Any questions? Okay, seven fifty-one point five, use of alternative vehicles to transport students.
This policy was last revised in 2014, so we're bringing it forward to bring it in alignment with our policy formatting as well as updating the legal requirements.
Okay, any questions? Or move on to the rule, the same, seven fifty-one point five?
Same reason for those changes as well.
Seven fifty-one point six, co-curricular student transportation.
We are recommending that we repeal seven fifty-one point six and then just move that information into seven fifty-one point seven. The, a lot of the language that exists is duplicative and really co-curricular trips are treated very similar to field trips. And so it didn't make sense to have a redundant policy that essentially states the same thing.
Seventy, would anyone have questions about the repeal or being incorporated into seven fifty-one point seven? Okay. Do you still need to go over anything with seven fifty? Okay. Okay, moving right along, we're getting there, folks. Seven sixty-two, vending machines.
This is a new policy. Actually, the accounting department requested this policy. We have vending machines in a number of our buildings and how those vending machines are treated with respect to our nutritional requirements, as well as where the proceeds from those vending machines go. Because we are governed by the DPI's accounting procedures, we needed to make sure that we are in compliance with that. So this is why we're bringing forward a policy about vending machines.
Any questions? Okay, seven seventy-three, use of electronic signatures.
Another upside to COVID was that we have really resorted to the ability to have electronic signatures on district documents. It's been very parent-friendly, and we have gone leaps and bounds with the ability to do that over the two years of COVID. There are statutory requirements for what's a valid electronic signature, so this policy sets forth what is required in the district to have a valid electronic signature as well as authorizes an electronic signature by the board.
Any questions? Okay, moving on to seven eighty, insurance management.
This is it. Our last policy is with respect to the board's authority to require an insurance program in the district and to adequately address the safeguarding of the community's investment in district property, health and safety, and providing for replacement of district property when losses occur.
Any questions?
If I could just add, also on, then on the chart are the policies that were reviewed, but I just want to make sure that you know that we're not recommending any changes. And the reason for not making those changes is included on that chart. One thing we are, have been adding as we've been going through this process is when the policy was last reviewed. So if it has a date that looks like it's been sitting on the books for a number of years, by adding that review date, the public is aware of that. It just hasn't gone stale, that we have looked at it, but it does accurately reflect the practices and procedures and the board's governance position with respect to that policy.
Thank you. It's a lot of, a lot of work and a lot of time and effort went into it. I can see that, so thank you.
Then I'll bring these back for the regular board meeting. I'll make the change that James had suggested with adding that definition, so you'll see that in the policy, and then we'll be able to approve these at the main board meeting.
Thank you, Melissa. Um, these policies, all our policies, um, are so foundational to the work we do. So I just always appreciate, appreciate when you come before us and talk about these policies. It's also a good reminder of, of how, how regulated public education is and, and how much we, how seriously we take things like safety. You know, all these things that, that parents, I, um, sometimes lose sleep over and, and that we're, we're paying attention to it the way we should. Thank you. Thank you, Laura. All right, so, um, we are now moving on to number six. That is just our, our schedule going forward. And then, anybody have any questions about any of that? And then I would just, could someone please, uh, read the motion to go into closed session? Go ahead, Brian.
Make the motion that the board convenes in closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight five one C to consider employment, promotion, compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee over whom the board has jurisdiction. Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight five one F to consider financial, medical, social or personal histories, which are discussed in public would likely, would be likely to have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of persons referred to, specifically to discuss the superintendent and interim superintendent's administrative contracts.
Do we have a second? Second. Beth, do we need to do a vote? Vote? Okay, go ahead. Becker?
Aye.
Welch?
Aye.
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
McCoy?
Aye.
Eaton and Warren?
Aye.
Mills?
Mills?
Motion passes seven zero, we will adjourn across the hall to the small conference room. That's it. I guess I can't say we're adjourned. We are going to adjourn into a different location, so, all right.
You have been watching the Green Bay area public school districts Board of Education meeting. Please visit the school district's website, www.gbaps.org to view the program again. If you cannot fully access the information on this video, please let us know the accessibility issue you are having by calling nine two zero four four eight two zero two five or by email at communications@gbaps.org. We will try to provide the information to you in an alternative format and/or make the necessary improvements to make the information accessible.